Good afternoon and welcome. I'm Dan Grotnick, Chair of the City Planning Commission, Director of the Department of City Planning. First up, a happy early Valentine's Day to everyone, coming up tomorrow, so if you have not done the necessary, now may be a little too late, I don't know, but we'll find out. We are joined today by Vice Chair Knuckles, Commissioners Benjamin, Bozorg, Osorio, Cerulo, Crowell, Dweck on Zoom, Gold, Kermani, Marine, and Rampershad. Welcome to all of you. We have a packed agenda today. First, I want to highlight the Department of City Planning's and the New York City Department of Economic Development Corporation's new food retail expansion to support health program report. Now, it's a lot of words, but I'm talking about fresh, the fresh report. It shows that the 30 full-service fresh supermarkets that have opened in New York City since 2009 in all five boroughs, in areas where New Yorkers previously did not have easy access to fresh food, are now today serving 1.2 million New Yorkers. That's about one in every eight New Yorkers and as many people as live in Dallas, Texas. All New Yorkers deserve to have fresh and healthy food nearby, and this program, made possible by zoning rules and tax incentives, is helping to make that a reality. So, we're really excited to see the progress of that program. Thirty-one supermarkets to date, 20 more already in the pipeline, so we're just getting started. Those additional stores will serve an additional 300,000 New Yorkers, and we want to make sure that New Yorkers and property owners are aware of this important program. For this week, I want to note that alongside City Council member Crystal Hudson, we are hosting three public meetings for Brooklyn's in-the-works Atlantic Avenue Mixed-Use Plan, a neighborhood plan which we refer to as AIMUP, A-A-M-U-P, led by facilitator WXY. These in-person meetings will take place at PS 59, I'm sorry, PS 9, the Sarah Smith Garnet School, located at 80 Underhill Avenue in Prospect Heights at 6:30 PM on February 13, 15, and 16. The topics these three meetings will cover are housing, income-restricted housing, job creation, and support services and public realm and infrastructure needs, respectively. It's a great opportunity for people to get involved, and there will, of course, be many more to come. Moving to today's agenda, we are starting the public review process for the Madison Square Garden special permit, which is already generating a lively public debate. I think it is worth taking a moment to walk through the arena's history and the special permit that is now before us. As you all know, the garden was first located across Madison Avenue, across from Madison Square Park. The site, which was leased by P.T. Barnum, served as an open oval arena for circuses, flower shows, dog shows, concerts, and more. The initial venue was demolished and replaced in 1890 and remained until 1926, when it was torn down and became the gold-topped headquarters of the New York Life Insurance Company, still an eye-grabbing part of our skyline today. The third iteration of the arena rose on the west side of 8th Avenue between 49th and 50th Streets where the Worldwide Plaza Building is today, and that's where it first became the home of the New York Knicks and Rangers. Finally, in 1963, the then-already-famous arena got a special permit to operate in its current location. The Pennsylvania Railroad sold the rights to build at the historic Penn Station, which was demolished in 1963, and Madison Square Garden was developed on the site where it has lived ever since. The events of 1963 gave us both the current structure of Madison Square Garden, which today is the oldest arena in the NBA, and the second-oldest in the NHL, and the passage of the New York City Landmark Protection Law in 1965. Most of us will agree that the historic Penn Station should never have been demolished, and that, in an ideal world, this is not where MSG would have been cited at the time. If we had a magic wand, perhaps we could reverse some of the decisions made in history. Today, however, the garden owns the land that it sits on, generates nearly $2 billion a year for New York City, and is home to some of our beloved sports teams, and is the second-busiest music arena in the world in terms of ticket sales. What we can and will do is what Mayor Adams said last week, we are going to make sure that we get the best deal for the people of this city. New York City's zoning resolution requires that arenas and venues with more than 2,500 seats obtain a special permit to operate. The original MSG Arena special permit ran from 1963 to 2013, when a new 10-year special permit was issued. The 2013 permit's 10-year term limit was put in place because the city knew that the MTA was planning to overhaul Penn Station at some point. That special permit expires on July 24th. I will note that we will allow the garden to continue to operate as we evaluate their application during this ULP process. Before us, we have an application from Madison Square Garden for a special permit in perpetuity. Today, we will certify that application. A reminder here, certification is merely the start of the public review process. As with all applications, it signifies only that an application is complete. It is not a determination that the factual information presented in the application is sufficient to warrant issuance of a special permit. This is always an important point, but it is particularly important today because Penn Station is now finally undergoing its own reconstruction, in a plan that is being driven by the state of New York. Design work has already begun, and it is an incredibly exciting moment. Our hope is that, in partnership with our colleagues at the state, we will enable a world-class station, one that this city and region deserves, and will be a source of pride for the next generation of Americans. Accordingly, as this process unfolds, our focus of the City Planning Commission will be on making sure that MSG works closely with the Metropolitan Transportation Authority in connection with that plan. MSG will need to actively partner with us and the MTA to ensure that its arena structure and operations not only do not impede, but actually enhance, the rail agency's ability to deliver a new Penn Station and a great public experience in the area. We will carefully evaluate how far MSG can and will go to accommodate the public infrastructure project right below it, and public realm improvements needed around it, and that will determine the length of time we will afford for the renewal of the permit. We have made the requirements MSG will need to meet for a new permit stricter this time, and we have clearly spelled them out in a zoning text amendment that the Department of City Planning submitted last week alongside MSG's application for a new special permit. The amendment from City Planning requires MSG to prioritize great above-and-below-ground public and open spaces, including by ensuring that the arena and its loading docks are compatible with safe pedestrian movements, and that the arena will be compatible with plans to improve Penn Station. In the course of this ULP, I expect to see the applicant commit to us that the arena facility will be made appropriately compatible with a world-class 21st-century Penn Station, and the MTA and other railroads' plans to reconstruct and improve it. If the compatibility finding will require modifications to the current design of the arena facility, I expect information to be presented as to those issues and MSG's willingness to cooperate. The Commission will, of course, evaluate all information submitted by the applicant, but the CPC also intends to hear from the railroads on those issues. Of course, the MTA, the input of the MTA will be critical in the Commission's deliberations. So, we look forward to having this conversation on the special permit and the City Planning text amendment with the Commission, the public, and the council. We know that there are a lot of views on the subject, and we look forward to hearing all of them. We also have several projects focused on housing and job opportunities that are, like the MSG application, entering the public review or the city's ULP process today with certification. For housing, we'll hear about a proposal for in Benstonehurst, Brooklyn, at 1656 West 10th Street, with 27 homes, a quarter of them permanently income-restricted, and a supportive housing development in Marcellania and the Bronx. The Bronx project is at 893 Eagle Avenue and promises over 80 homes for low-income New Yorkers and those living with HIV and AIDS. Every new home we bring to this city means a roof over the head of at least one more New Yorker. As for job opportunities, the Commission will learn about a proposal for Bushwick, Brooklyn, at 1160 Flushing Avenue, with a mix of commercial offices, medical offices, retail, and light industrial space. The project seeks to create space for 1,400 new jobs, and it demonstrates to us that the North Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone is attracting more business, and that is great news. In Soundview in the Bronx, the York Studios Project at 1,400-story Avenue is starting public review today. This film and TV production studio expects to create around 280 jobs and new public access to the Bronx River waterfront that will also connect to the nearby Soundview Park. So, with that, by way of an extensive introduction to today's already-busy schedule, thank you for bearing with me. Let me ask Ryan to help us get started and kick off our agenda.
Certainly. So, this is the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, February 13, 2023. The time is 1:13 PM, and a quorum is present in the hearing room at 1:20 Broadway. The first item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit and a referral of a city-initiated zoning text amendment in Manhattan Community District 5, and our presenter is Stephen Johnson.
All right. The New York City Department of City Planning is proposing a text amendment to Section 7441, the special permit for arenas, auditoriums, stadiums, and trade expositions. The proposed action only affects the Pennsylvania Station subarea, B4, of the Special Hudson-Yards District in Manhattan Community District 5. The proposed text amendment is to update and strengthen findings for the special permit as it relates to public space loading, existing transit facilities, and future transit improvements in the project area. This action is in conjunction with the application by MSG Arena LLC, who seeks a special permit pursuant to the same section of the zoning resolution as modified by the proposed text amendment. The special permit would continue to allow MSG to operate an arena with a capacity of over 2,500 seats, and while these are separate applications, I will be making one presentation for both projects. So, just to start to give you some information on the presentation, I have just under 50 slides, and I'll touch on the history of the arena, an overview of the existing conditions, proposed improvements, a discussion of the text amendment, as well as a discussion of ongoing planning efforts in the area, which include below-grade and above-grade transit improvements. As we're all aware, and as Dan described, some of the complex history of the project, MSG is the busiest arena in the country with two professional sports teams, and from 2017 to 2019, they averaged 235 events a year, including multi-day events, other athletic events, music concerts, and special events. The arena generates about $1.8 billion in economic activity in the city. The project site is located on the original Penn Station, as you can see in the left photo. This was eventually demolished and replaced with a plan for the development of MSG and Two Penn and the below, squash below, station. So, in order to construct the arena with more than 25,000 seats, a special permit was needed, and the Commission approved it in January of 1963 with a term limit of 50 years. The arena includes an as-of-right theater use, which was originally called the Felt Forum, and is now called Hulu Theater, a bowling alley, an ice-skating rink restaurant, and a series of open spaces surrounding the area. In 1989, there was a minor modification of the special permit to facilitate a series of internal improvements to MSG for circulation, elevators, amenities like restrooms, seating, concessions, et cetera, and a reconfiguration of the as-of-right theater. That included the construction of a Western addition to the arena that pushed out into the 8th Avenue frontage of the arena into the open areas, and this facilitated loading for the theater. And the image on the right shows MSG and Two Penn under construction. Like I mentioned, the original special permit was for a 50-year term limit, which expired on January 24, 2013, and the applicant came back to the City Planning Commission for the new special permit to continue operations, as well as for changes to signage and open areas. The application was approved by the Commission on May 22, 2013, for a 15-year term. City Council subsequently modified the application, which included reducing the term limit to 10 years, and approved it on July 24, 2013. So, on the issue of the special permit term limit, zoning text does not indicate a specific term for the arena special permit. While the applicant is seeking a special permit in perpetuity with no time limit, the City Planning Commission may authorize any special permit use for such terms of years as it deems appropriate, just as the Commission did 10 years ago. So, we have our area map here, and it shows a predominantly high-density commercial with MSG outlined in yellow. MSG is in a C64 zoning district within the Special Hudson-Yards District and the Penn Station subarea B4. Two Penn on the eastern side of the block is in a C66 district of the Special Midtown District, and the Garment Center is to the north, and there are M districts to the south. The block is on a single zoning lot with MSG and Two Penn, and at the lower corner, you can barely see it, on the lower bottom right-hand corner, is a small lot controlled by New Jersey Transit, which is their dedicated entrance into the arena. So, to give you more context of the area, we have an ortho of this, the project area, and it shows MSG and Two Penn side-by-side with a mid-block taxiway between the two buildings, which was closed, has been closed since 9/11. One Penn and Two Penn are currently undergoing a rehab process, so a large number of the images that I'm going to be showing you show scaffolding and construction on 7th Avenue and 33rd Street. And one other thing to note, at the very bottom of the image, is the location of the state's proposed new train station. That's in the Penn General Project Planner, the GPP. So, are we talking some more about this towards the end of the presentation? But I just wanted to show two slides early on in the presentation that gives you some context about some of the major planning projects that are going to be coming in the immediate area while we discuss MSG. So, first is the Empire State Development's Pennsylvania Station Area Civic and Land Use Improvement Project, or simply the Penn GPP. So, this is an illustration of the eight proposed development sites, and this includes 10 buildings, mainly commercial office buildings, amounting to over 18 million square feet, and the new train station, as I mentioned, under Sites 1, 2, and 3. The new train station would connect into the existing Penn Station, and the GPP also includes a series of transit and public realm improvements, such as shared streets along 33rd, 31st, and 32nd Street. Additionally, the other major transportation planning project in the Penn, is the Penn Station Master Plan Rehabilitation Project. Now, this project is the MTA working with Amtrak and New Jersey Transit. The illustration is looking south and shows Two Penn fronting 7th Avenue on the left there, and the circular MSG Arena, of course. Between the two structures is the proposed mid-block train hall, which is in the former taxiway, and it's also within the MSG loading area. There are a number of proposed below-grade and above-grade improvements related to this rehabilitation that are focused on Penn Station and connections to the above grade, and this will obviously link in with also the GPP improvements, and, like I said, we'll be discussing this more later. So, this is a site plan of the block that shows the MSG entrances, the loading entrances, and Penn Station entrances. Historically, the main entrance to MSG has been at Two Penn Plaza on 7th Avenue. MSG has an easement from 7th Avenue through to the arena. People enter at 7th, travel through the Two Penn breezeway, and then over a pedestrian bridge that crosses over the former taxiway that is labeled here "Mid-Block Driveway", and then they go into MSG. The arena has four vertical cores placed at each corner of the lot, and are labeled A, B, Tower A, Tower B, Tower C, and Tower D. And the arena has entrances at 8th Avenue between, on Tower C and Tower B, which are located on either side of a Penn Station entrance, which just highlights how MSG and Penn Station are so, their infrastructure is so intertwined together. There are also pops on those two areas outside of Penn Station, outside of Tower C and Tower B. Tower D is the MSG loading entrance, while Tower E is the Amtrak loading entrance. And I also want to mention, in the upper right-hand corner, you can see the color better on this version, and there's a little green area called Plaza 33. This is a new Plaza gateway entrance into the LIRR concourse, which has closed-off vehicle entry from 7th Avenue onto 33rd Street. The new LIRR concourse is open and has some great design features, like high ceilings and spaciousness about it. I don't know if anybody's been able to get in there yet, but basically, it has all the things that we'd like to see in a train station concourse that's not currently in the Penn Station concourse. So, this is a section of the entire block from 32nd Street. This, I think, very effectively shows the complexity of the site. So, MSG controls the area above grade, and the areas that are in gray on this one are subject to the special permit. Amtrak, along with MTA, control the area below grade, and Vornado controls the Two Penn site. So, there's very little space, as you can see, separating the arena from the Penn Station. The arena itself is about 50 feet up in the air. The Hulu Theater, you can see it in white on the side, on the left, with a drawing in the taxiway loading area on the right side of the arena between the Two Penn and the arena. So, the next five slides, I'll go quickly through to give you an idea of the arena in plan. So, again, the areas in gray are subject to the special permit. We have the street level of the arena with the theater fronting 8th Avenue and the loading areas. The theater, again, is an as-of-right use and not subject to the arena special permit that we're discussing today. The theater is wholly owned by MSG Arena LLC. So, this is Level 2, the lobby area, and you can see the connections from Two Penn into MSG through the pedestrian overpass. This is the mezzanine, showing much the same thing, including the as-of-right theater. Level 4, and then we get to the event level, Level 5. This is 50 feet above grade, and this is where the forklifts drive up to from grade to unload things for concerts and shows. MSG has a total of 12 levels. There's more levels on top, and then the rooftop's out at 150 feet. So, now I want to take you on a walkabout the project area and show a series of images on the existing conditions, starting at 8th Avenue and 33rd Street, and moving counterclockwise and ending with a discussion of the loading. So, the left photo here is looking east with the Empire State Building in the background. This corner includes entrances into the arena and Penn Station. You can see that 33rd Street is partially cordoned off with barriers due to the construction of Vornado, on Vornado's properties. So, the photo on the right shows the ACE subway entrance located in the Baron Pops Plaza on the corner. You can also see a cylindrical air vent underneath the word Madison on the C entrance. Those are air vents necessary for, obviously, when you're sitting on top of a major transit hub, you need air vents to circulate air around the area. So, right here, we have the 8th Avenue frontage, which is across from Moynihan. On the left photo, you can clearly see the extensive, long, monotonous blank frontage, which is from the 1989 modification that built the Western Edition for the theater. And two other issues to point out here are the grates. Obviously, the grates, as I've already mentioned, when you sit on top of a major transit hub, you need to have appropriate air circulation and venting, and then you have bollards that are placed there by MTA. Now, MSG does not control the bollards. Those are in the public right-of-way. So, you can see that with the grates and the bollards, you can have significant impacts on whatever public design amenities that you want to have on the site, and there's so little space, as I pointed out in the previous slide, I think it was Slide 11, that the space between the arena and the Penn Station is so thin that you can't have things like soil depth to put any landscaping in the area. It's very difficult to do. Okay, so, moving on, this is the 31st Street and 8th Avenue corner. There's a Penn entrance between the two MSG entrances labeled A and B. This corner also shows how trucks load into the theater. The center in image is an old image, pre-the bollards, and that sign also is no longer there, but you can see that the trucks, in order to load for events at the theater, they back up onto the sidewalk, then they cross over into the plaza, and then the workers line up as the truck doors are open and load in from that access point. There are about 30 to 40 events a year that require a truck load-in at the theater, and typically, there are about three to four trucks, and as many as 10 trucks. Now, the photo on the left shows the old pop sign that is located in the ground and is looking kind of worn out. And then the photo on the right is a recent photo that shows landscaping containers that are screening the theater loading entrance. I haven't seen those containers the last couple of times I've been up there, but that just shows you what kind of landscaping is viable in the area as an amenity. So, now, we're looking on 31st Street, looking east and west on 31st Street, so for every event at MSG, the arena, not the theater, but at the arena, they typically require six to seven trucks that can be accommodated in the loading area. So, MSG goes to the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment to get a permit to park trucks on-street in the public right-of-way. They typically queue on 31st Street, 8th Avenue, and 33rd Street, and because 33rd Street's under construction, they haven't been able to queue there lately, since that construction was going on. They also have two sites further away. One is on 33rd Street by Moynihan, across 8th Avenue, and then they have a location on 11th Avenue, also by the Western Rail Yards. So, the image on the left shows MSG holding curbside parking in advance of any trucks arriving, and the image on the right shows an evening where there was a recent event at MSG. I took the photo, but I did not attend the event. The white trucks are rental toilets and trailers that are parked in the cordoned-off area at 31st Street curb, and the yellow boxes are office containers, the rentals, sitting in the open areas around the arena. So, the people who are associated with the event in the arena rented these, and apparently they're in these containers and using these containers. You can see there's also a power cable across the bottom. So, moving on to 7th Avenue, as I mentioned earlier, One Penn and Two Penn are going under some major rehabilitation, and the photo on the right shows the main entrance along 7th Avenue with all the scaffolding. So, this traditionally has been the main entrance into Two Penn Station and MSG, and the left illustration shows a rendering of a completed Two Penn and the new east-end gateway, LIRR, entrance, which is up and open. The entrance is in the plaza called Plaza 33, which is a pedestrian-only area, and the plaza, as I mentioned, is closed off from vehicular traffic. So, previously, trucks would drive down 7th Avenue, turn onto 33rd Street, and then go into the MSG loading area, or they would stage and queue off of 33rd Street, and now trucks must enter from 8th Avenue and 33rd Street, which is our images here. So, this is 33rd Street, looking west on the right. You can see it closed off during construction, but you can see the very tip of the LIRR entrance on the right photo, and the larger image on the left is, shows a truck entering into the loading area from west 33rd Street and 8th. And on the very top, you can see it here on the corner, is a white truck, and then this metal screen. So, as part of the 2013 special permit, one of the amenities that was approved was that MSG would have metal screening off the sidewalk to screen the loading areas from pedestrians. But behind that screen is the loading area, part of the loading area for MSG. So, this is the loading area and taxiway for MSG, and you can see Two Penn is under construction still, of course, on the left photo, on the left-hand side. So, the taxiway was originally created as a bidirectional main vehicle access point for drop-off and pickup, for people going to the station and going to MSG. It was eventually converted into a northbound-only direction, and then it was closed off post 9/11, and is now used exclusively for loading for MSG on the north side. There still is a sidewalk that remains along the side by Vornado, and that gives you access, pedestrian access, to the mid-block area for people using the station and for ADA elevator use. Now, across the top of the taxiway is, you can see, the pedestrian overpass. This connects Two Penn and MSG. Another one of the unfortunate design elements to the complex is that the pedestrian bridge has a nine-foot height limit, so trucks cannot pass underneath it, because it was originally for vehicles. So, trucks arriving have to load into the loading area and then back out. The truck backs out onto 33rd Street and then leaves from 33rd Street. And similarly, on the photo on the right, when MSG was completed in 1964, standards for semi-trailer trucks were increased to 13.5 feet in height, which made the internal 12.5-foot loading dock entrance unable to accommodate trucks. So, there's a 12.5-foot height limit there. In addition to that height limit, the ramp slopes upward, because, right, we have to get up- because we have to get up to the higher-level floors for loading and unloading. So it's really difficult for any type of truck to get up there, except there are small trucks, service vehicles, smaller trucks can make their way up there to use the loading area. So when loading for an event, the trucks are unloaded outside. And you can see in the left photo, the forklift's driving around, unloading the three semi-trailer trucks there on the left. And this area is closed off, in the closed-off taxiway loading area. This area is able to handle six to seven trucks. So loading for events is controlled by whenever the trucks arrive and then load out after the show. Loading can be completed in the early morning hours before seven AM, if there's an agreement with the artist to pay for the off-hour union labor loaders. If not, then the standard time for loading/unloading is eight AM during rush hour. So when you have trucks entering into the loading area, all these forklifts come out. And it's like a very synchronized, I mean, I have to say, it's very effective, the way they do it, and they do it pretty quickly, too. But they scurry back and forth. But then, you can see in the photo on the right, that's the truck trying to back out on Thirty Third Street. And it's just, it's very tight space. And then with the addition of Plaza Thirty Three, which closes off Thirty Third Street, it's even more constrained on that area. So this is the other side of the loading area. So I just showed you Thirty Third Street, this is the Thirty First Street loading area. So the left photo shows the southeast corner of MSG, which is the loading bay for Amtrak and MTA. And the photo on the right, you can see the little van in the picture. That's basically the loading area for Two Penn. That's their loading area for when they need to load into that building. So during events at MSG, there are often TV trucks and trucks have support operations. So it's not just loading and unloading vehicles on-site, but support vehicles. And you can see that this white trailer truck is some sort of operation or mechanical or power-generating semi-trailer. So the pedestrian overpass, this is the last images, the last existing conditions photos from the walkabout. So all three images are related to the area underneath the pedestrian overpass, which has the nine-foot height limit. So this was originally the main vehicle drop-off point and has been completely closed off since nine eleven. And you can see that the loading areas are cordoned off with concrete barriers. So you can see the concrete barriers in the photo on the right, which is pre-the Penn, Two Penn rehab. So the concrete barriers keep the path open, which is in the middle image. That's a clear path going from each building at grade. So we have the existing MSG loading plan. Approximately seven trucks can fit into the loading areas on-site, including the show staging here on Thirty First and Eighth Avenue. Like I mentioned, there's three, a hundred and thirty-five events a year on average. So for larger events, like there was a recent show just this past year by the musician Roger Waters, he had up to twenty-two or twenty-three trucks to load for the show. So obviously, where are these trucks going to go? It presents a problem as to where they go. So in addition to the three frontages on Thirty First, Eighth, and Thirty Third, I mentioned the locations next to Moynihan. And I also mentioned the location by the Western Rail Yards between Thirty First and Thirty Third Street. So these events, MSG goes to the Mayor's Office of Media and Entertainment, and they get these permits to park on-street in the public right-of-way. And that's like a constant run of requests from MSG, because they have so many events there. So when the work at Two Penn and One Penn are completed, MSG would like to go back to their original queuing and staging area on Thirty Third Street. And you can see how on the very top, right next to the Thirty Third Street tag, you can see there's a little cutout on the curb next to the bollards. And that's envisioned as an area for the trucks to stage and load. But as of now, due to the construction, they have been not using Thirty Third Street, they're using Thirty First Street. And they've been operating business as usual with Roger Waters' numbers of trucks. So as a reminder, Thirty Third Street is proposed to be a shared street in the Penn GPP project, where all users have shared the right-of-way. So now, moving from the general background and existing conditions, I want to discuss some of the planning that is currently underway and possible future improvements and developments at Penn Station as outlined in the GPP and in the Penn Station rehab. So the new Moynihan Train Hall, as we all know, opened a little over a year ago. The twenty twenty-one federal infrastructure bill has approved federal funding for the Gateway Project, which will double train capacity along the northeast corridor from Newark Penn Station into New York Penn Station. There'll be new rail bridges on the New Jersey side and new tunnels coming under the river and into the Penn Station. So New York, New Jersey, and federal government have agreed to a twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty split of the cost, which, it's great that they were able to come to an agreement on that. And I showed this slide earlier. So this is the study area with the eighteen million, proposed eighteen million square feet on the eight sites and ten buildings. This is a prime example of transit-oriented development, where you put all the density around public transit. Funds that would be generated from this GPP would then go towards transit and public realm improvements. And of course, right in the middle of this project is MSG. So one of the aspects of the GPP is the ESD, Empire State Development, is proposing shared streets along Thirty Third, Thirty Second, and Thirty First. You can see them in the green, kind of tree-lined areas in this illustration. This, in concept, the department totally supports shared streets. I think it's a great idea to do this. And typically, we've been working with DOT on a number of projects where we think this is a viable option. But the question is, how do you make shared streets on areas around MSG when the existing loading is less than adequate? Okay, so at the same time as the Penn GPP project, MTA, along with Amtrak and New Jersey Transit, are discussing and working on the Penn Station Master Plan Rehab Project at Penn Station, which aims to make significant improvements to the station. So we have all been in the existing Penn Station and noted the underwhelming design, the cramped spaces, the low ceilings, poor sightlines, no light and air. So the regulating, these regulating entities have agreed to certain station improvements at this point. And this illustration shows the elimination of one of the levels. So there's two existing levels at Penn Station, and they're proposing to make it into one single expansive level that has better sightlines, more space, and then you can bring light and air in from above grade with more open entryways and more expansive spaces. So this proposal obviously connects to the new LIRR concourse. It would also connect to the proposed new train station, one block to the south. And then we'd have a completely integrated system here. One of the proposed station improvements in the plan is a new mid-block train hall that is located where the former taxiway is located. Starting on the left of the illustration, you can see the East End Gateway LIR entrance, which is open with escalators leading underground. And you see the Thirty Third Street as a shared street with all users, which is dominated by people and pedestrians and apparently, one truck that loads. And you have a new street-level train hall. This is above grade, that brings light and air into the below-grade areas, which has been, you know, the one level has been removed below the station. So the mid-block train hall could have a height limit, not a limit, but a height of up to a hundred feet and integrate Two Penn and MSG. And they're proposing likely retail along the train hall. And MSG would still have its entryway into the arena from Seventh Avenue. So the concept is to create a civic space that is worthy of such an important transit hub and create a notable street-level presence that brings light and air into Penn Station. And here's another rendering from Thirty Third Street from Plaza Thirty Three. So this is an early rendering of how the mid-block train hall could work with a reconfigured loading bay for, loading area for MSG. So the train hall here is completely separated from the loading area. So there's no mixing of uses there. So the most significant benefit from this proposal is obviously an improved public space and dedicated Penn Station facility. And for MSG, for the first time, trucks could then drive in Thirty Third Street and then exit on Thirty First Street. So you have one direction that they're coming in and one direction that they're going out. One other improvement I wanted to highlight is that MTA is also proposing improvements to the corners on Eighth Avenue. This is Thirty Third and Thirty First Street. This will also bring in light and air into the station and also improve the entrances for MSG. These proposed Penn Station transit improvements en masse are not currently funded. MSG controls their zoning lot and the above-grade spaces. So any of these improvements would require easements from MSG as well as some above- and below-grade structural reconfiguration. But MTA has a design firm under contract and expects thirty percent design work to be completed by the end of this year on the proposed improvements. And they're also currently in negotiations with MSG as to how to best move forward. But there's a general agreement on the concept of these improvements. So moving on to the action, the City Planning text amendment, I'll touch on first. So here are the existing findings for the special permit that MSG is seeking. These are the same findings that were met in nineteen sixty-three and the findings that were met ten years ago. So the purpose of the special permit is related to the size of the arena. As of right, an arena with less than twenty-five thousand seats is permitted in the zoning district. So when you have an arena with more capacity, in this case, a maximum of twenty-two thousand seats for MSG, this requires a special permit due to the potential planning issues and impacts related to the thousands of people moving in and out and around the arena and the surrounding area. So as you read through these existing findings, you can see that the main focus is one particular type of transportation, and that's cars. So how do cars get to the arena? Where do they drive? Where do they park? As you probably know, MSG does not have any accessory parking. They don't have a public parking garage. So that kind of skews how one reads these findings. In the supplemental report in your briefing package, MSG put together a report that says there's seventeen off-street parking facilities within a quarter mile of the arena that have about four thousand three hundred spaces, and there are more just outside of that boundary. So however, when you're located on top of Penn Station in Midtown Manhattan with direct connections to the ACE, the One, Two, Three, and NJT, and then one block away to the east is the BDFM and QRW and the PATH trains, the majority of your patrons are coming by public transit. So the Department of City Planning is proposing, well, the department believes that an arena located in a densely populated area such as this should have findings related to the context, the built environment, and not just cars driving to the arena, but also public transportation. So the text amendment would modify the existing text and expand the findings applicable in Hudson Yards sub-area B four to include the construction of public spaces, arena loading, the importance of Penn Station as a gateway access point, and how the arena facilities are used, the public use the facilities, and how they move in and out of the arena, out of the station, and then get below and above grade. So it's really a lot about pedestrian movement, tourist movement, worker movement, resident movement. So the text, so sorry. So the first finding acknowledges that the original findings are still important, so we're keeping those findings in. But all the new findings are related to, like I said, public spaces and the importance of Penn Station as the premier gateway entrance into Midtown. Public spaces should have amenities that also provide the appropriate space to facilitate the movement of people and be integrated with transit facilities. And as you've seen in the presentation, MSG access points are totally intertwined and linked with Penn Station. So there is a new finding related to loading, so loading operations. So loading might have planning impacts on the public space, on pedestrian movements and the functioning of streets, as well as transit facilities. And this is especially true of an arena that has outdated and inadequate loading facilities with space for only six or seven trucks on-site. And I've showed you how trucks are staged and queued in the public right-of-way. MSG included a loading operations plan in your package that details their existing operations. So this finding requires that a loading operations plan that outlines the parameters of the loading, where the trucks are located, where do they load, where do they park off-site. And the plan is going to be reviewed by the Department of Transportation, as well as the Department of City Planning, and other affected rail agencies such as MTA and Amtrak. And they can review the plan, they could submit a report, some recommendations, and the commission can take those into consideration. So the final finding that I wanted to touch on here is that the arena shall be consistent and compatible with the existing adjacent transit facilities and with any proposed improvements to those transit facilities. This finding is to acknowledge that the importance of Penn Station as a transit hub and to consider any impacts Penn Station has in relation to the arena and the arena has impacts on anything related to Penn Station. This finding for the arena asks the commission to examine the existing facilities of Penn Station MSG, but is also in relation to any proposed future improvements at Penn Station. So MTA, working on behalf of Amtrak, as I mentioned, is now designing potential public transportation improvements to transform the station. So the proposed text amendment would require a consideration of any proposed future transit improvements by a transit agency that impacts Penn Station and MSG and find that the totality of the arena is consistent and compatible with proposed future Penn Station improvements. So now, going on to the existing open space and the proposed open space improvements. So this is just simply the existing open space plan. The areas outside of the arena are dominated by pavement and grates, vents from the transit hub, and lack general, they lack, you know, any amenities for people to use. Coupled with that, you have an arena that holds twenty-two thousand people. So you must have clear, safe, open spaces where people can get in and out of the arena for normal events, but also for emergencies. So that's one of the reasons why you would want to be able to have space for people to get in and out quickly. So there were, these are the proposed improvements that MSG is proposing. It includes decorative pavers, a series of benches with planters inside, three planters located against the building, a designated bicycle parking area, and an update of the Pop signage. I'll just take you through each of the corners where these are proposed. So on the northwest corner of the lot, the applicant is proposing these new decorative pavers. There are five shaped planters, shaped kind of like beans. And there'll be seating in there as well as landscaping, and those will be on top of the new pavers. On the southwest corner of the project, it's very similar. It's the decorative pavers and the two bench planters. You can see them at the lower part of, by the next to the bollards. And then on the southeast corner, again, we see the pavers, two large, these two are larger planter benches, because they're more expansive. And there's proposed bicycle parking. You can see it right underneath the, in the mid-block taxiway, it's with those lines there. It should be noted that those two larger planter benches are roughly where those yellow rental office containers were located on that Slide Twenty-One that I showed you earlier. And that's just simply a detail of the planter benches. The last issue I want to address in the presentation is the timing of the MSG special permit and the timing of any MTA-proposed new design plan to Penn Station related to below- and above-grade improvements that affect the area that MSG has control of. So the red-hatched areas on this drawing roughly illustrate and correspond to where MTA is proposing the most significant above-grade improvements on-site. And these would be located on the Eighth Avenue corridors and the mid-block taxiway train hall area. Your briefing packages have a set of six illustrative drawings that the applicant created to show you some further details of where those could be located. It is also likely that there are going to be some other areas that have yet to be designated that would be below grade, that would require structural work, infrastructural work, such as support some mechanical structures like that. So these proposed Penn Station improvements are not currently funded. MSG controls their lot and the above-grade spaces related to the arena. And any improvements along these areas would require MTA working with MSG. But like I said, MTA has an architecture and design firm under contract, and they're moving forward on design plans for these improvements. So after discussions with MTA and MSG, So, um, after discussions with MTA and MSG, the department is proposing a multi-step process related to any transit improvements, future transit improvements that would be outlined in detail in a restrictive declaration. So, what the commission is reviewing now is the special permit for the arena with over twenty-five hundred seats and is modified by the proposed text amendment and with the new findings that we just reviewed. What the commission is also taking into consideration is that there could be future improvements on-site related to Penn Station, and how does that, uh, work with MSG's site, uh, MSG's site plan? So, for future improvements, we don't have the design plans yet, but there's a general understanding of what these improvements could look like, where they would be located, and you have, I've showed you some of the illustrations. So, any changes to the MSG site plan of the arena areas under commission purview require that MSG comes back and gets commissioner approval of that modification. So, the process would roughly be the commission continues your review on the current MSG special permit application as modified by the text, how the arena exists with their proposed public space improvements. The application would include the RD that outlines the process for future improvements. MTA and MSG continue their discussions and negotiations on the design and the terms and how to complete those improvements. MTA will continue the design work, and then there'll be a benchmark, and that will trigger a return to the commission. So, the exact benchmark has not yet been determined or agreed to as of yet, um, but one of the, the benchmarks we've been discussing is a certain percentage of design work being completed on the improvements. So, when MTA has reached that benchmark, uh, when the designs are refined and reach a certain stage, MSG must then come back to the commission and propose the modification to their site plan. This would likely include, you know, a new set of drawings and some new, uh, details on the improvements. The commission would then review the improvements and make a determination as to whether the arena still meets the findings, in particular, the new finding number six that states the arena is appropriately consistent and compatible with existing transit facilities and with proposed improvements to such transit facilities. The arena has to be compatible with the Penn Station improvements. So, just to wrap up, that, that wraps up the presentation for the MSG Arena Special Permit and the DCP text amendment. The actions, if approved, uh, would allow MSG to continue their operations of the arena to a maximum capacity of twenty-two thousand seats. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. I'm sure there are going to be some questions. Let me just, uh, start by saying, uh, thank you to you and to, uh, your team at the department for updating what clearly were, uh, findings that needed, uh, updating. There was so much emphasis on vehicular access, but now, as proposed, it will focus on the public spaces and the civic importance of the area, a loading plan, and consistency with current and future needs of, uh, Penn Station. So, I, I think this is, uh, a real improvement and, uh, meets the, the moment that we are in, so thank you for that. Two questions from me, and then I'm going to go to my colleagues. The thirty percent design level that, uh, we expect Penn Station to be at, um, you said that that might come later this year. Can you just tell us what you know about that?
So, in our discussions with MTA, they've been adamant that there'll be a thirty percent design completion by the end of the year, and I'm told by our, our designers at City Planning that that's schematic designs. I don't know if that's the case for MTA, but it's at some point where, um, they'll reach a certain stage that they feel comfortable with perhaps moving forward. But like I said, we haven't determined what any type of benchmark would trigger that, uh, them coming back, uh, to show us, to show you the future transit improvement.
Understood. Let's talk about loading for a second because that's an important new finding and also a real mess over there. So, you had mentioned that the pedestrian bridge over the former taxiway was nine feet high and that the loading dock at MSG is twelve feet, six inches high. Is that correct?
Yes.
Are there any, there, are there any modern trucks that could either enter the loading dock or go underneath that pedestrian path, the passageway at this point?
Well, there are service trucks that can get up into the loading dock, the twelve-point-five foot limit. So, like a regular truck could figure, can drive up into there, like a pickup truck, I'm not, like maybe a UPS truck, but smaller service vehicles can get up there, uh, but not the, uh, underneath the pedestrian overpass.
And what about one of those eighteen-wheeler trucks that you showed in the images?
Never.
Okay. So, neither the, the pedestrian passageway nor the loading dock enables these trucks to either pass from Thirty Third to Thirty First Street or back directly into the building or go directly headfirst into the building for that matter? Is that right?
They, sometimes you see images of the, the truck going straight up to the twelve-point-five-foot sign, and then they just load from there.
They stop.
They can't go in.
And that's when they have an, an army of forklifts moving
Yeah.
Things out of the, out of the trucks and bringing them into the garden. Okay. So, just for a moment, illustrate for us what could be in that area between the garden and Two Penn in the taxiway area where, uh, the rail agencies perhaps conceive of a grand entrance on Thirty Third Street, and where all, there also might be an opportunity to allow for trucks to enter Thirty Third Street and exit on Thirty First Street. Can you just lay that out for us?
Sure.
And tell us how that might work and how that might possibly be effectuated?
So, there's, I think there's two competing elements here, right? There's the MTA proposal, which would take down completely the passageway, the overpass, put in the train hall, and put in the new loading docks into MSG. There would still be a connection from Seventh into MSG, but that would take down the existing pedestrian overpass as we see it today, and there'd be the new train hall. Now, absent that, uh, a couple of things that MSG could do, there's plenty of floor area on the site, so, uh, they could, they can build a new pedestrian overpass is one thing they could do and raise it up higher. So, trucks could go in and out of the, uh, the loading area. In addition to that, what you could do is you could actually design, if, if even with, outdoing that, even without raising the mid-block pedestrian pass, overpass, you could do a number of design elements underneath there in that area that would make it like a real entrance into Penn Station, right? This is if there's no MTA proposal, this is just as-is. You could, you know, it's just concrete barriers and metal barriers everywhere. So, you could design that area to be nice and have amenities in that area. There is open space. The one photo showed the passageway between the building. It's an open, clear space, which is great. That's great to have that open, clear space. But there's all sorts of things, uh, that are not, that are clearly not designed well in that area.
Okay. So, i- in, in the event that you have a train hall there, uh, you would still either need to remove the pedestrian passageway from Two, from Seventh Avenue through Two Penn over to the garden or reconstruct it at a higher level, higher than nine feet. Is that right?
That's right.
Okay. And that would enable trucks potentially, bless you, alongside the, a future train hall and alongside Madison Square Garden to come off of Thirty Third Street, stop, unload, and then proceed out on Thirty First.
Yeah. So, they wouldn't have to back out on the Thirty Third Street and then go the other way.
Thirty Third, which, as you noted, is envisioned to be a spare, a shared street
Yeah.
Uh, down the line. Um, okay. Last question from me. Uh, how many trucks would you be able to unload at a time in that passageway between Thirty Three and Thirty One if such a thing were enabled by a raised pedestrian passageway? How many trucks can you get in there?
I think it'd be roughly the same. I don't know if, I don't think it increases the number of trucks that can load on-site, but it just increases their, not increases, but improves the traffic movement. So, you have one way in and one way out. It doesn't increase the number of trucks that
You'd have six or seven being able to load or unload at any given time. I'm really asking about how many trucks you actually could stop in that area underneath and right between, you know, sandwiched between the garden and that train hall area at one time. Is that one truck, two trucks, three trucks between Thirty One and Thirty Three to stop there, unload, and then, and then proceed? Or, you know?
Is this with the MGA mid-block train hall? Or is this
Yeah, with it, if you, let's assume you have a train hall and you have a raised pedestrian area which enables trucks to go through, and you wanted to pause two or three trucks in that area to unload them and get them off of Thirty Third Street, get them off of Thirty First Street. How many of those could you actually get?
It would roughly be the same with the mid-block train hall.
Which is how many?
Which is six or seven.
Okay. So, you get six trucks in between Thirty First and Thirty Third Street at a time?
But there are other areas that they, they could, they could maneuver to be in. So, it's not just the one line of trucks.
Right. I'm asking how many you can get in that specific area at any one given time?
I don't know. I mean, it's probably, it's six and, six or seven which would fit how they're doing it now.
Okay. All right. We will revisit that question. Okay. Uh, let me see who else has, uh, questions here. Vice Chair Knuckles?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Stephen, uh, for that exhaustive review.
Exhausting.
Um, I have a couple of disparate questions, but, uh, you know, questions nonetheless for me. Starting with the, um, the report that we have and, uh, the last two paragraphs under zoning text amendment, the actual last paragraph, which I have read several times now, and I think I know what it means, but I just want to make sure, uh, I want to hear what the department says it means. It says, "The applicant's proposal, including the proposed enhancements to the public spaces on the site and the proposed loading operations for the arena, is not dependent on the adoption of the proposed text amendment. However, the proposed additional findings confirm and clarify CPC's jurisdiction over such open areas and loading operations. The discussion of findings included in this application demonstrates satisfaction of these findings and assumes that the proposed arena special permit and the proposed zoning text amendment will be reviewed and approved concurrently." What does that mean to you?
So, uh, that's in the, the applicant's loading plan or supplemental plan?
It's in the briefing
So, that says to me that, uh, the applicant believes that they've submitted the loading plan, and that satisfies the finding to submit a loading plan. Obviously, DOT, and we're reviewing the loading plan to comment on the plan and to, you know, suggest any improvements or take suggestions from the commission and from, you know, DOT as to how the loading plan operation could be improved.
Okay. My second, uh, question is, I saw in one of the renderings, um, that, uh, it looks like Thirty Third Street would be, become a pedestrian, uh, mall of sorts and, and, and not accessible by, uh, by vehicles. Is that correct?
Uh, the proposal is to make it a shared street, which is a shared right-of-way between different users. So, even if it were a shared street, MSG and Vornado could still bring their trucks in onto the street and then go into their loading areas, but they would not be able to queue and stage on the street there, on Thirty Third Street.
And say for that, there would be no vehicular traffic?
Emergency vehicles?
Yeah, yeah.
Anything like that would be acceptable.
Of course. Okay. Uh, third and lastly, in, in terms of a, a, um, a special permit in perpetuity, what would then, assuming that, that were the case, what would be the city's leverage in terms of ensuring that, uh, the obligations of the applicant have been, uh, uh, performed and, and, uh, satisfied completely, uh, consistent with the, uh, with the plan? What, what leverage would we have in the, in the absence of a special permit?
Uh, well, you, the commission can decide on if a term limit is appropriate.
Right.
So, I think, um, you know, there's the possibility if, for example, you thought, uh, if someone thought that, um, there's a lot of things going on in the area right now, and there's a lot of plans
[laughter]
That maybe, you know, a term limit may be appropriate until we get to the bottom of those plans or, or not, so.
Also, that the, the restrictive deck that Stephen discussed
Mm-hmm.
Has, will have, is recommended to have provisions in it that would require a return. So, so, the granting of a special permit, um, is dependent on the, uh, findings continuously being met, and that means that, that there, uh, and, and with the new findings, it, that it always be sort of harmonious with, with the, uh, transit hub that it is, you know, on, on top of. And so, if there are new plans for that transit hub, then that finding may need to be revisited in the future, and that's, that's why we're structuring that restrictive deck the way that we, uh, have discussed.
I see. Thank you.
Commissioner Kramani?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation, and actually Vice Chair Knuckles asked all my questions.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Sarullo?
Stephen, thank you for the presentation. Um, one, one is a quick thought, um, particularly with respect to the, uh, the vice chair's comments about the shared street. If, and I know in the questioning that the chair had about the number of trucks that could potentially fit on the street, and it was, the answer was six or seven, you know, the
Loading area.
In the, in the loading area, which I'm assuming is somewhere here, or this'll just be used as a through street?
Yeah, the loading area is, um, the mid-block. So, this is their existing plan here. So, you can see the six trucks up top and the one in the lower by Thirty First Street. So, those, those represent the seven trucks, six
Got it.
Being MSG and one being Amtrak, Vornado-related.
Got it. Okay. I, I, I just was pointing to that because, you know, a shared street concept always looks amazing in a rendering. Uh, the practical, the pra, and there isn't even a vehicle in that rendering.
Yeah.
So, there's no sharing there. That's a pedestrianized block. But the practical reality of what shared streets become, eh, there's a lot more conflict, we'll call it the word conflict with a little C, than, than the renderings present themselves as. So, how we think about how this may be used could be very different than how it actually is used. So, that, that was just a thought on the, on that. Stephen, the last slide before the, the, like, the close-out slide, um, that you showed, which talked about really related to the relationship between the garden and its discussions with the MTA.
Mm-hmm.
So, and, and the fact that the MTA expects that thirty percent of the design completion will be done by the end of the year, which obviously would be likely beyond U L R P. So, we have a site plan, just want to understand the process as how it's envisioned here. So, we have a site plan, um, and they are in discussions through this period of time or beyond with the MTA about obvious transit improvements, and that, that obviously has to be done. And then, let's assume that the MTA has suggestions for what needs to be done around the garden, and the garden then has to comply with those things. And that then changes the design, the, the, the site plan, for some reason, to accommodate, we'll call it accommodate, maybe that's not the right word, I'm calling it accommodate, the desires of the MTA. What then occurs is that a, some finding has to be determined to see if it's, those changes that they have to make are consistent and compatible with transit facilities, but it's the transit agency asking them to make those changes, and then they have to come back to us to have the site plan reevaluated in order to accommodate the MTA's request to do certain things within their site with respect to improving transit accessibility.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. So, they're working together? So they're working together, they're in negotiations.
Right.
They're talking about how to make these proposed improvements because they can't, you know, you can't put in a train hall if MSG can't load in their own loading area anymore.
Understood.
So they have to meet dimensional requirements. There's so much infrastructure that, uh, you know, intertwined with each other below grade and above grade.
Yes.
That, you know, it just goes beyond a simple, like, oh, we're just gonna cut open an entrance and it's gonna be nice. Uh, so the idea is that they'll be discussing whatever these improvements are, have a design that everybody agrees to or some amount of it they'll agree to. And the RD would have a benchmark that, um, like I mentioned, we haven't gotten to yet, that says at this point MSG would come back to the commission to review these changes to the site plan, because that's the part that, the site plan is what the commission controls and the use, uh-
Yeah, I, and thank you for that, um, sort of this more concise summary of the, of what's happening. I guess part of me sees it as being an incredible burden to impose upon the applicant, I'd, to then have to come back to us when the MTA, the government agency, is telling them what to do, which we all want them to do, whatever the negotiation may be. I could see if the garden wanted to change their site plan unilaterally for whatever reason they wanted to, that that would be something they would need to come back to us. And I guess, and I'm not suggesting they don't come back at all and that there isn't a record of what those changes may be, but I just wonder if, and I don't know what it means when it comes back to the CPC, if this goes through, you know, is this an authorization? Is it a certification by the chair or is it a full-blown review? I just wonder if that, since we know already, if it's the MTA doing it with them, it definitely is consistent and compatible with transit facilities, you would imagine. Again, it's not a unilateral change by the garden. And then if that's the case and they're doing this because they are improving transit and the garden is telling them, these are the five, ten projects we want, which I know that's how that works now, it's working all over the city that way, which is great, why then we're sending them back to come through perhaps an elaborate review, more than a important, significant, thorough review that is perhaps less time-consuming?
So the amount of review has not yet been determined.
Okay.
So, you know, that's part of the discussions that we're having. We envision it more of a, uh, commission certification process.
Okay, okay.
Um, you know, but that hasn't been ironed out in detail yet.
Understand, and I, I would think that's not an unreasonable way to do it. It wasn't clear, so that, that was part of the question. I think that's probably a reasonable way to do it versus anything more elaborate that could be incredibly time-consuming.
And I think also, to point out, some of these improvements are really beneficial to the arena, because if you could just look at the Eighth Avenue corners, you know, it goes from being a barren-
Yeah.
-pavement plaza to having a nice entrance into the station and into MSG. So it's not just for Penn Station and the entire public's benefit, which could be enough, but it's also for MSG's benefit, I think.
Understood, understood. Yeah, I wasn't attempting to circumvent review and it was more about the process and what it really meant, because it wasn't clear, but that's because it still hasn't been determined. So I, I understand that, appreciate it. Thank you.
And Commissioner, thank you for those questions. And let me just add one additional point, and this, this may be clear to everybody else and it may, it may be consistent with what you're saying and asking, but I just want to say it out loud, which is even though we expect that the MTA and MSG will be working together on this conversation as we have our public review, uh, there will be such time in which the MTA will make its determinations on its designs, its schematics, et cetera. And when they do that, there will be a question of whether or not, whatever it is that they envision for the reconstruction of Penn Station is still consistent with what we want for the arena. And that is the thing which we are going to be asked to evaluate when they come back. So MTA comes up with their plans and then at that time, whatever that time is that we determine is the reasonable moment, and this is just the concept here, they would come back to the commission or the MSG would have to come back to the commission. We would review, uh, whether they still meet the findings and those findings include that they are consistent with Penn Station's current and future needs. So that is the point which, uh, allows for the process that is currently underway, but newly underway, for the reconstruction of Penn Station and its design to proceed and also for us to have this conversation right in the middle of it. So anyway, that may be exactly what you were saying, but I did want to, I did want to just clarify that point. Okay, all right, Commissioner Benjamin and then Commissioner Gold.
Hi, thanks for the detailed briefing. I really appreciate it, particularly since I was around at the city council ten years ago when we did this. And like Commissioner Sorullo, I am somewhat uncomfortable with the idea that the MTA will basically be the determining factor about this permit. Uh, because ten years ago, we were discussing the MTA having a plan and here we are and we're still discussing it. So it's not clear to me that as much as we all might like to see governmental agencies work and play well together according to a schedule that makes sense to us, it's not clear that that's gonna happen. I mean, you can take a look at the history of what happened at Grand Central Station to kind of see that even with just one entity, um, given that, when you say, I have a couple of questions about how that process will work. When you say that thirty percent design would trigger this review, thirty percent design completion and approval by the MTA board or just thirty percent design that the architects have presented to the staff?
So those details have not been worked out yet. We only know the MTA has told us their contract with the architecture and design firm says they'll be at thirty percent at the end of the year. So that's the only, and I, that's not the benchmark, we don't have a benchmark, but that's kind of the type of benchmark that we've been discussing, something similar to that. So that, that has not been reached and those details haven't been worked out. And to your first point, it's a very, very good point, because if you read the CPC report from ten years ago, it says future improvements everywhere in the report, right? Everybody's aware of it. The difference with this time and ten years ago is the twenty-twenty-one infrastructure bill has dedicated funding to transportation improvements that are affected in this northeast corridor. So, uh, and the state has completed the Penn G P P and they've agreed, which, you know, is a minor miracle itself, with New Jersey and New York and the feds to do a twenty-five, twenty-five, fifty split. And they've got contracts out for a lot of the different work they've hired up, as they say, so there's money to be had. So those things are all moving forward. So this seems to be different from future improvements, but to the point, we, the commission also has to take into consideration that there aren't any improvements. They have to look at the site as it is existing.
And so we clearly all understand that there is money now and ten years ago, um, there was money, there was potential money, but, um-
Arch.
Yeah. So what happens, where does the New Jersey Transit or Amtrak become involved in this discussion, since even though they're at Moynihan, if you get out of the train in one location, you're in Penn Station? So when does that issue bubble up or do we need to take account? Plus, Penn Station does have the ticketing facilities for New Jersey Transit?
They're all coming all together and MTA is the entity that's kind of taken the lead with Amtrak's okay. So the federal funding, the federal entity is giving MTA the okay to being the lead on this. So, and they're already, so there was a lot, a lot of negotiations over the one level versus two level, how the Penn Station rehab would proceed. So those, I, I can't say for sure how much of the details have been lined out, but they've agreed to certain improvements for the Penn Station rehab. Working together, they've agreed to those improvements. So that's why MTA is moving forward with what they're proposing now.
And lastly, has Penn Station, as a user of the garden during particularly basketball games, not a big hockey person, getting into and out of the garden during games has always been an issue? It is not easy, it is not quick. Have they or anyone else looked at or suggested ways to make accessing and exiting the garden by patrons a less painful experience?
Um, not that I'm aware of. I don't know if they've, you know, during the pandemic, they changed all the protocols as to where to enter and where to exit.
Yes.
And I don't know how that affected or if they did any studies on how that affected pedestrian movements, patron movements. But what I think, what things like that highlight is that when you have an emergency or pandemic or you have construction on one pen and two pen, you can see how things change and maybe the thirty-third street staging and queuing area is not as important as you thought it was, or that it could be compensated with the thirty-first street queuing and staging, right? So certain opportunities open up when you see these things happen. And I think, uh, they weren't required to do any pedestrian flow movements, uh, out of the arena, uh, as to how they'd come in and out and nobody's mentioned them to me as them being a problem, not saying that they're not a problem, but that hasn't been an issue for us yet as of this point.
Because I was wondering when looking at the findings that we have to make, there wasn't really a finding about what happened inside the facility that is what we are looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And I was wondering if, whether the department had thought about that and rejected it or it just had not come up.
It had not come up. We're more concerned about how they interact with each other and less about the internal MSG operations. I can tell you back in twenty thirteen, MSG spent a million dol, a billion dollars on improvements inside the arena.
Right, but a lot of those were about their retail opportunities and better food and better food stands and more places where they could sell, you know, paraphernalia for, and about putting in sky boxes in better places. They weren't really about getting, if I remember, I don't think they changed how people, the entrances and exits to get up to the floors where the arena exists. Okay, thank you, but if you would be able to maybe think about it a little, about those issues with the facility itself, I'd appreciate it.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Gold? Uh, back, Commissioner, sir.
Just, excuse me, Frank, first, thank you and second, uh, just a quick, uh, point to follow up. So we're starting the process, right? We're at certification and it's a relatively tight timeline from here, right? Uh, from here to when, when the permit, the current permit expires. Um, and, you know, I mean, one could suggest that asking for this in perpetuity might be, you know, a reach or a negotiating point, who knows? We could see over, during the process and sort of get to where we need to be. But hypothetically speaking, if we don't get to where we need to be between here and there, I know Chair, uh, perhaps you've dealt with this already, but you mentioned that presumably we want to be supportive of making sure that the facility can still be used, but at the same time, we've got, you know, call it six months until this permit expires and the current ask is for perpetuity. So I guess more curious, um, how one thinks about that, you know, this perhaps fail.
Well, that's completely up to the commission to decide if it meets the findings and any information that you all need, uh, we can get it to you. MSG will be here to present, uh, and take questions. Um, you know, MSG is obviously a very important economic generator for the city and, uh, you know, sometimes difficult working with them, but, you know, it's, it's important for the city, important for them to have the arena. So whatever you guys need to-
And then, and then question to, um, it sounds like the department has been communicating actively with the MTA on this. Yeah, so, I mean, you're sort of sitting at the same table, if you will, to, to know what's going on and sort of real-time get that feedback.
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Sorio?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, thank you very much for the presentation. Um, I had a couple of questions associated with the special permit to increase the capacity of the arena. I was wondering if the department has identified any opportunities to discuss provisions to increase the energy efficiency of the building? So for example, have there been or do you see opportunities for us to analyze the extent to which new legislation can actually, uh, require or encourage, uh, onsite generation? One, uh, when you see a flat roof like that, you know, you start thinking about all sorts of things that could be, eh, included, um, so that's, that's the first question. Uh, the second question has to do with, you know, can the evaluation of the transit hub itself be contextualized to, for example, begin looking at not just sort of provisions of urban design to accommodate loading, but, but, uh, the electrification of the fleet itself and, uh, additional, uh, improvements to, or additional provisions to improve air quality, not just reduce emissions, et cetera?
So that is not an issue that we've discussed or looked at. Um, I will contact MSG to get an understanding of if they're doing anything and what provisions they have, uh, regarding energy efficiency. Um, I can tell you that the trucks for artists and shows, they come from all over the United States, so I, I don't know if there's any regulations that they can, they can control about that, but they could, might be able to control, um, you know, their own forklifts used and their own energy efficiency within the arena, right?
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that, but I, I'm also very interested in seeing what you see as opportunities where we can sort of further the analysis and provide some guidance in terms of what we think they should be considering or expanding. I mean, this is, as you pointed out, a billion-dollar amenity that, that we think, you know, could actually make a really interesting improvement to further and improve the infrastructure of the city. Thank you.
Yeah, we'll take that back and discuss it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, with that, uh, I see no further questions, uh, from the commission and, uh, so Stephen, thank you very much for your time and energies, uh, on this. We will, of course, be seeing this again. Uh, this MSG special permit is now certified, which of course is the beginning of the process, uh, and the arena text amendment is going to be referred to the community board and the borough president will follow along with the special permit. So, uh, thank you very much, Stephen, and, uh, let us move on to the next item.
Thank you. Uh, the second item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit and a city map amendment and referral of authorizations in the Bronx, Community District Nine. Our presenter is Camila Thomas Garcia.
Chair McCusman, is that?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Commissioner Rivers has recused. Camila, welcome, hello.
Hello, um, good afternoon, Commissioners. This project is fourteen hundred story avenue, York Studios. The applicant, B R twenty-twelve Realty LLC, is requesting a special permit to modify bulk regulations, a city map amendment, authorizations to modify waterfront public access area requirements and a char, certification for waterfront public access area. If approved, this actions would facilitate the construction of a new four-story, approximately a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred square foot television and film studio with a hundred and forty accessory parking spaces and one acre of waterfront public access area in the Soundview neighborhood of the Bronx, Community District Nine. The development site is in the Soundview neighborhood of the Bronx, along the eastern coastline of the Bronx River. This area is characterized by industrial uses along the waterfront near residential areas. The development site is located on the northern border of Soundview Park. The surrounding area is served by the BX five bus line along Story Avenue. The closest train station to the development site is in the Hunts Point Avenue Station on the sixth line in Hunts Point. Um, access to the proposed development site, um, is afforded through, um, a main entrance in Story Avenue and the second entrance on Lafayette Avenue. Land uses in the surrounding area include industrial, transportation, utility and manufacturing- and manufacturing to the north and west and across Bronx River, including warehouses for material storage and self-storage facilities within one to two-story buildings, as well as a recycling center. Commercial, institutional, mixed-use, and multifamily residential uses are located to the east. Most of the mixed-use and multifamily apartments, build, apartment buildings range from thirteen to nineteen stories in height. Notable uses in the surrounding area include the elevated Brockner Expressway to the north and the two hundred and five acre Soundview Park to the south. Surrounding area is predominantly located within the M one-one, M one-two, and M two-one manufacturing sewing districts. An R six district is located east of Colgate Avenue and north of Lafayette Avenue. The proposed development would be the second and final phase of the York Studios Michelangelo campus. York Studios have been used as the filming set for, um, classic movies like John Wick and The Amazing Spider-Man Two. Um, in twenty sixteen, the chairperson of the City Planning Commission certified that the adjacent property at fourteen-ten Story Avenue was exempt from visual corridor and waterfront public access area requirements because the lot was not a waterfront lot. The existing building at fourteen-ten Story Avenue was completed in twenty ten, twenty twenty, excuse me. The proposed development site is comprised of lots one, eight, and two hundred, together with the southern portion of Story Avenue that is proposed to be demapped. The total area of the development site is two hundred and seventy thousand, a hundred and twenty-eight square feet. It has approximately ninety-one feet of frontage on Lafayette Avenue and a thousand eighty-nine feet of frontage on the Bronx River. Um, the following pictures, photos show the current condition of the proposed development site. Photo number one is taken from the corner of Story Avenue and Bronx River Avenue, looking south towards the entrance of the York Studio campus. Um, this picture was taken from Story Avenue, uh, looking towards the west. The entrance to York Studios is on the left and the proposed demapped street is on the background. Photo number three was taken from the, from inside of the York Studio campus, looking south. The development site is on the right and the existing building is on the left. Picture number four overlooks the west bank of the Bronx River from within the development site, or towards Hunts Point. And photo number five is taken from Lafayette Avenue, looking towards the west to the entrance of the development site that is on Lafayette Avenue. The proposed development will be a new four-story, a hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and six square foot television and film studio building with a hundred and forty accessory parking spaces, as well as one acre of waterfront public access area. The site plan shows the ground floor of the proposed building. Please note that the orientation of the drawings has changed. The north is now towards, um, the right side of the screen. Um, the proposed building will contain five studio stages and accessory spaces for talent rooms, wardrobe, hair and makeup, and offices. A hundred and forty parking spaces will be provided at the cellar level. The building will set back from the property line and rise without a setback to a maximum height of sixty feet. The one acre of public access area is comprised of the following. A four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine square foot upland connection located at the northern side of the development site that connects the W P A A with Story Avenue. The applicant is proposing to include an eight-feet steel picket fence gate at the entrance of the upland connection. A short public walkway that will include a total of forty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six square feet. The short public walkway will include a variety of seating, tables, bicycle racks, and planting. At the south of the development site, the unbilled portion of Lafayette Avenue between the proposed development site and Soundview Park will be improved by the applicant in consultation with the New York City Department of Parks and Recreation. Lafayette Avenue will remain a map street, but will be improved and maintained under D P R's jurisdiction. This area is proposed to include a total of seventeen thousand, six hundred and eighty-three square feet and will serve as an alternate upland connection and as a visual corridor following upland connection design requirements, including seating, planted areas, and trash recyclables. Um, the applicant is proposing to include, um, an eight-feet steel picket gate between the alternate upland connection and the short public walkway. In order to facilitate the expansion of the York Studio campus, the applicant is requesting a special permit to modify bulk regulations, a city map amendment to the map, a portion of Story Avenue, authorizations to modify, um, area and location elements of the waterfront, as well as design requirements, and a chair certification for the waterfront public access area. And now I will walk you through each of the requests. Um, the first being the special permit. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Sonny Resolution, um, section sixty-two dash eight thirty-seven A to modify the requirements of, um, section sixty-two thirty-four B three to allow a building height that is greater than thirty feet. The proposed building would accommodate, um, the specific facility and equipment needs of the studio, which includes sound stages for a variety of production types that would require high clearance ceilings. The applicant proposes to demap an unbilled portion of Story Avenue. This portion is seven, a hundred and seventy-five feet long by eighty feet wide and with a total area of thirteen thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two square feet. The southern half of the demapped portion would be acquired by the applicant and improved as an upland connection and visual corridor. The upland connection will have approximately four thousand, three hundred square feet. The applicant requests for the upland connections to be located at intervals of a thousand feet along the short public walkway, greater than the maximum permitted. Recompliance with upland connection location regulations required an, an additional upland connection located at the central portion of the development site that would result in a smaller building or two separate smaller buildings. Additionally, because the proposed development site is adjacent to an intervening lot, the upland connection would not be direct access to an upland street. The applicant requests for the upland connection entry area to have a minimum, to have a width of forty feet instead of the required fifty feet. Providing fifty entry, fifty-foot entry area would require frontage on both Story Avenue and Bronx River Avenue, thus extending the W P A A into an established parking lot that would, that provides parking to the existing building. The applicant requests the following design modifications for more than twenty percent of the circulation path to be located beyond ten feet of the shoreline. This modification is necessary to provide continuous circulation path to the portions of the path that will fall under the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation's jurisdiction, which would require the path to be located beyond ten feet of the shoreline. To allow a reduced paved area along the upland connection of the entry area frontage adjoining the public sidewalk. The reduced width entry requires five-foot paved area adjoining the public sidewalk that is proposed to be reduced from seventy to forty-two percent of the frontage to allow for better design. The reduction is required. And the required five-foot paved area will also be compensated by a widened circulation path that is proposed to be twenty feet wide at the entry area frontage and reduces gradually to twelve feet. The wave sitting within the upland connection. Since the upland connection at this area will have a limited area, um, the need for sitting will be satisfied by providing sitting within the immediately adjacent short public walkway. To allow the use of steel picket fencing with a height of eight feet greater than the three feet required between the applicant-owned site and the waterfront public access area. The proposed studio will be accessible and utilized beyond typical business hours and beyond W P A A operating hours. The proposed heights are the minimum modification necessary to ensure the security of the equipment and occupants of the proposed studio. Finally, to allow gates with a height of eight feet, greater than four feet, to be located between the applicant-owned site and waterfront public access area in a gate opening less than seventy percent of the waterfront public access area in aggregate. This reduced openings represent the minimum modifications necessary to provide functioning gates free of obstructions within the circulation paths and openings at the proposed locations. All these actions will allow for York Studios to expand and create, um, a new studio and a new waterfront public access area that would connect to adjacent Soundview Park. This concludes my presentations, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thanks, Camila. Um, I just wanted to focus for a second before I go to my colleagues, um, on those gates that you mentioned, uh, as they relate to the access to the waterfront public access area and the fence that would border between the pathway and the building. Um, so if I understand it correctly, we'll start with the first one, the one you have up here, which is the steel picket fencing, uh, with a height higher than greater, greater than thirty-six inches between the applicant sites of the building that would be built and the waterfront public access area. Thirty-six inches is what's allowed?
Yes.
And they are asking for?
Eight feet.
Eight feet, okay. And then on the access point from the upland connection to the waterfront on both Story Avenue and Lafayette Avenue, a four-foot gate is allowed and they are asking for?
Eight feet.
Okay, now, that's a, that's a big jump in both areas. Tell us why, in a little bit more detail, they believe that, they, the applicant believes that this is important, necessary, et cetera, et cetera, and why we should deviate in this authorization so far from the norm to accommodate what they are looking for.
Sure, uh, according to the applicant, their, um, hours of operation for the studio would be far past the regular hours for, um, waterfront public access area. Um, and in order to keep security and maintain the safety of the people who will be working in the studio past long hours and to, um, I believe to keep the, um, their equipment safe, they are proposing much higher, um, much taller gates and fences so in between the public access area and the studio.
Do they make any distinction between the, the fencing, the need for the fencing and the need for the gates as a way to protect employees, materials, equipment, et cetera?
No, I believe that, um, because they're raising the, the height that they want for the, for the fences, they would also need to raise the height for the gate. Um, but they have not spoken to us directly about why the fences need to be eight, exactly eight feet, or the gates.
Right, as opposed to seven or six or anything else, okay. Um, well, I'll just, uh, say it out loud that that's a point of interest for me when the applicant comes to, uh, to pay us a visit. But, um, uh, I know we have questions, let me go to Commissioner Kurmane.
Thank you so much, thank you so much for the presentation. Um, questions for me, and, and again, when the applicant is before us, that I think they should consider is, one, the relate, what the relationship might be between this new studio and the adjacent, um, Soundview houses, um, a public housing development that is very close. And as we think about comprehensive planning, job creation, um, what that relationship is, cause it could be actually an active one if they work with N I T O, work with the Rees Department, or another kind of relationship, but I think that's important. And then, um, in terms of the stewardship of the Bronx River, um, that they talk with the Bronx River Alliance or like what, what will the effects of the, of the construction and anything else on the Bronx River, which has gone through, you know, I think, twenty years of, of repair and, and access? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Chair Knuckles, followed by Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair. Um, could we go, I think, one slide back to the, uh, site, site plan? Couple, uh, back there, to where it shows the existing building which is adjacent to the site, yeah. Uh, this existing building, is this, uh, a part, is this one massing with the high, with the school?
No, it's not. A separate building.
Two separate buildings, okay. So this is a high school?
Yes.
Okay, and what is the adjacent building, the existing building?
It's another studio.
Oh, that's, that's another studio, okay, right, okay. All right, um...
The, um, the proposed building is basically a continuation, so they want two buildings for studios.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, secondly, and this is, I think, somewhat related to Commissioner Kurmane's point, I would like to know, at least, you know, uh, by the time of the hearing, how many jobs do they project being created with this new facility?
Um, I believe it's about, um, two hundred and eighty-three jobs, uh, but we can confirm with them if they project any other number from what they gave us.
Yeah, uh, uh, number and, and, and type, obviously, you know, within the, the film industry, but you know, I'd, I'd like to know with some specificity what those jobs are. And as, as the commissioner indicated, the kind of outreach that, that, uh, uh, and opportunities that might be created by these jobs for local employment, enhance local employment. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Marine.
Camila, thank you, and welcome to the planning committee.
Thank you.
To the department. Um, my questions are going to be centered around the waterfront. As, you know, as you know, as people have noted, this is the Bronx River that's been, had been dirty for years, cars. I mean, just north of this, about maybe, what, two blocks up, there is the Sheridan interchange, and that used to be full of cars, debris, dirt, dead bodies, anything you can think of. The river's been cleaned up, and just last week or two weeks ago, we had two dolphins just north of this site, which is really curious, cause it's on the, it's on the concrete plant park, which is right across the Bronx. So this, this waterfront, um, shoreline is intended eventually to connect through to Starlight Park at some point. So I'm just gonna mention that, but my, my question is gonna be centered around this portion of it. It's really nice to know that Story Avenue is gonna be, uh, a visual corridor and it's gonna be opened up, cause you, you drive down Story, you can't even see the river, so it's gonna be nice to see this. Uh, and I also welcome the development because it is a job generating, um, facility that will specifically help out the community. And there's two new buildings on Story Avenue, so this whole neighborhood is being tightly knit, finally, together. This used to be an old airplane hangar. Um, so my question is, uh, what hours of operation are gonna be allowed at the shore waterfront park? Is there lighting going to be there? Who's going to maintain it? I also would posit that the eight-foot gates are sort of telling me, stay away, don't come in here, you're not welcome. And as a community, I think that we better ourselves, and let's be real, somebody's gonna go into a, a facility, an eight-foot gate's not gonna stop them, they're gonna get in there however they wanna get in there. So I, I do understand the security concerns. But I'm more concerned about the connection over here to, to Story Park, the Soundview Park, excuse me?
Yes.
And of course, the upland connection here, cause everything else is gonna flow here. And as mentioned before, is the Bronx River gonna be a steward of this waterfront parkway? Or they're just being mentioned because they happen to be in the neighborhood? So those are sort of the questions that I'd like to flesh out, if you can.
Um, I wanna start with, um, your question on the gate and keeping the waterfront public access area welcoming and open. Our office gave, um, guidance to the applicant, um, several times to remove the gates and to lower the height of the fence. Um, those comments were not addressed, so, um, I'll defer to the applicant as to why they have not addressed our comments. Very, um, valid comments on the openness of the public, of this open space and having people come in and out as they please. Um, I believe, and we're working with the applicant on finalizing the hours of operation, we would like this to be open from six AM until one AM, but the applicant is operating under the assumption that they will need to close at ten PM. That is why, like, the hours of operation that they're, um, alluding to are like beyond ten PM. So we are working with them to, um, have them see this difference that we would like to have for the openness of the, of the waterfront public access area. Um, could you repeat your question on the stewardness?
We, there's, the Bronx River Parks Conservancy is mentioned in the report, and, and I'm just trying to better understand what their, um, involvement is gonna be. Are they gonna be stewarding the park, are they gonna be helping to clean the park? If you can elaborate on that, that would be very helpful.
Okay, I, I'll defer to the applicant on that, they have not, um, talked to us about that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
So for waterfront public access, there is a, a operating and maintenance agreement, and the, um, the applicant, the property owner, is required to maintain this, their property. Um, there is a maintenance agreement, though, with the Parks Department, and they review all of the, the, um, things that are proposed to be built in case they need to, they're sort of the maintenance of last resort for these types of things. But that's pre, that's standard for all of our waterfront, uh, open spaces. So they may be mentioning other, other entities, but they are responsible for the things on their property.
Understood, and just one last comment. Understood. And just one last comment. At the bend, where Story Avenue goes into Bronx River Avenue, right up there at the corner, that my, I would posit that we should, the O T should study that for light. It's the stop sign, and if we're gonna put an entry to a park, you know, York Studios, there's gonna be a lot of activity there, and it's gonna be very dangerous. I mean, I, I could tell you that I stop at the stop sign going into Bronx River, and there's cars that just swing without even stopping, and it's very dangerous.
Actually, Commissioner Marine, you asked about lighting of this space as well. Do we have a lighting plan in?
Thank you, Ryan.
In that, if we don't, we'll come back with something.
Yeah, it's fine. If you don't have it, you can come back.
There should be a lighting plan.
Yeah, it should be, in the drawing set, they do include it. We can forward that to you, so you can look more closely. But lighting is provided.
Yeah, I was just, I was just wondering, you know, the hours of operation as well, but if they coincide with the opening and closing of the park, then that makes sense.
Thank you. Commissioner Sorio, followed by Commissioner Crowell.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and thank you for the responses. Uh, my questions, uh, build on the previous comments, and rather, I would, I think it would be maybe useful to frame them in terms of something that we could use in the conversation with the applicant going forward. The W R P is very clear in terms of what the applicant has already recognized is required to do under the W R P. So, if you look at the A E A S, Appendix A, you'll see that there's already a commitment to several things. One, to maintain some type of maritime waterfront access, two, which you've, you've listed, but specifically eh, to, to encourage or sometime, somehow eh, improve maritime uses on the waterfront, not just sort of like access to the waterfront from the inland. Two, there's an insignificant commitment here to restore tidal wetlands and ecological resources. And, you know, something that I would highlight that I don't see specifically or explicitly listed is the fact that this is directly adjacent to one of the recognized ecological complexes, which is on the river, but it specifically is listed in the W R P as the Bronx River Avenue on Brookner Boulevard. That's a specific point amenity that has been recognized by the plan. And, uh, the, the other thing that I wanted to highlight here is, I know that this is outside of the significant maritime and industrial area, but this is, this is kinda like an interesting opportunity for us to think about really what does it mean when you're outside of significant maritime industrial area, but literally on the other side of the river. So, so what is sort of like, how can, how should we think about these places, and to what extent should we in, include some of the rationale that applies, you know, on the other shore?
Um, those are great points, and I think we could be able, we might be able to set a precedent on how we, um, move forward with waterfront applications. This is the first we've had in, on this side of the river, but, um, we are potentially looking at other applications. For example, the, the lot right, um, to the south of this development, in the future, might develop into another waterfront public access area, so we should, um, be looking at these questions and how applicants address, um, the important issues that you addressed. So, thank you.
No, thank you for that. And just, just a quick point is that this is the case where you don't have to ask whether they're going to be doing it, but you can ask for evidence about how they're planning to do what they're saying they're doing.
Right.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Crowell?
Hi, yes. Thanks for your presentation. Much appreciated and welcome. Um, can you give me a little more background on the relationship that, uh, studios have with the high school?
Um, I cannot unfortunately, because they have not talked to us about it.
All right. I, I think Bronx Arena has a very special mission, and given the number of new jobs that are being created, it would be, um, I, I think, a very compelling approach to include them in these plans in some way or another. Um, there, Bronx Arena is for an older student, an undercredited student, and one probably looking for new job opportunities at the same time while going to school. So, there's, there's some synergies there that might be interesting to explore and to see what, if anything, is planned as they think about, uh, the development and think about ways in which this is about job creation.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Bozard?
Thanks. Um, uh, my comments, I think, echo a lot of what we've heard already, but just, um, definitely wanting to hear a lot more from the applicant about connectivity in general. I know it's on the paper, connectivity to the park, but it was very hard to visually understand that or see that, um, and feel that. Um, it almost reads like more suburban office park than this site and industry that offers so much opportunity for connectivity, both socially and physically. So, um, as folks have noted, um, and I was also curious to know the types of relationship and investment, if, if any, as other studios in the city have, um, that the studio has made within the neighborhood and what their relationship is in general in the neighborhood.
Thank you, Commissioner. Um, excellent. All right. Well, thank you very much, and thank you, Camilla, uh, for your presentation. Uh, this item is certified, and, uh, we will, we will see it and you again soon. Um, thank you very much. Ryan, let's go on to the next item.
Certainly. The third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning tax amendment and special permit in the Bronx, Community District Three. Our presenter is Tin Duling.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Commissioners. The project is eight-nine-three Eagle Avenue rezoning, and is on the agenda today for certification. The applicant Housing Options and Geriatric Association Resources, Inc., or O G A R, seeks a series of U L R P and non-U L R P actions of a site located at eight-nine-three Eagle Avenue, and that is block twenty-six-twenty, lots forty-seven, forty-eight, forty-nine, fifty, fifty-two, and fifty-six, in the Morrisania neighborhood of Bronx Community District Three. O G A R is a Bronx-based nonprofit provider of supportive housing and services for the elderly, the mentally ill, the homeless, and adults living with special needs. Their proposed actions are a zoning map amendment, a special permit pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-four dash nine oh three, and a zoning tax amendment. The zoning map amendment is to rezone the site from the existing R six zoning district to a R seven dash two zoning district. The requested special permit is sought to permit the community facility floor area ratio and bulk regulations to apply to philanthropic or nonprofit institutions with sleeping accommodations. The zoning tax amendment is to amend the, uh, Appendix F of the zoning resolution and to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area, options one and two, co-terminus with the rezoning area. The proposed development is a new eleven-story plus cellar and subcellar, fifty-five-thousand three-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet community facility building with eighty-three affordable and supportive housing units, as well as counseling offices and multipurpose rooms to serve the building residents. Here is an aerial photograph of the rezoning area, highlighted in yellow, and the surrounding neighborhood looking north. The development site is highlighted in red, and the rezoning area fronts on Eagle Avenue to the east and East Hundred and Sixty-first Street to the south, both fifty-foot wide, predominantly residential streets. Uh, East Hundred and Sixty-first Street is also the boundary between Community District One, uh, and Community District Three, where the rezoning area is located in. The block on which the development site is located is mainly comprised of residential and mixed-use residential buildings, as well as commercial buildings along Third Avenue, and the buildings on this block range in height from one to six stories. Uh, several vacant lots are located on this block as well, and most of which are included in the proposed rezoning area here. The rezoning area is in a transit zone and well-served by public transit. The Prospect Avenue Station, uh, serviced by both the two and five subway lines, is located about half a mile east of the development site. The site is also served by local bus routes BX fifteen and BX twenty-one, both running along Third Avenue to the west of the development site, as well as BX six, running along East Hundred and Sixty-third Street to the north of the development site, as you can see here on the image. The area map shows the larg, larger local context surrounding the development site, and the project area measures approximately twelve-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety square feet of lot area, and has about hundred-and-twenty-seven feet of frontage on East Hundred and Sixty-first Street to the south, and approximately hundred-and-three feet of frontage on Eagle Avenue to the east. Uh, to provide some additional context, the lot directly south of the proposed development site is a Green Thumb Community Garden, and on the lot immediately west of the development site, here shown as vacant, uh, construction of a new thirteen-unit multifamily building will soon be completed. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of land uses as the project area is an intersection of different zoning districts. There are manufacturing and community facility uses to the south and southwest, uh, multifamily residential and commercial buildings to the west, and more multifamily residential buildings and community facilities to the north and east. Uh, here on, on the next few slides are photos of the existing site conditions. Uh, the rezoning area contains two currently non-conforming multifamily residential buildings that are situated, um, mid-block on Eagle Avenue, as you can see here. And as shown here, four vacant lots are located on the corner of Eagle Avenue and East Hundred and Sixty-first Street. The lots are located behind the chain link fences, uh, that you can see here on the left-hand side of the photo. This photo is taken from the Eagle Avenue Bridge that goes over East Hundred and Sixty-first Street. Uh, here you can see the significant elevation difference on the site, uh, between East Hundred and Sixty-first Street and Eagle Avenue, uh, as well as the difficult topographical conditions that characterize the vacant lots. Uh, here is an illustration of the proposed development at eight-nine-three Eagle Avenue, looking in a northerly direction. The applicant intends to build a new eleven-story plus cellar and subcellar community facility building with eighty-three affordable and supportive housing units, counseling offices, and multipurpose rooms to serve the building residents. The proposed development is a philanthropic or nonprofit institution with sleeping accommodations, as listed in Use Group Three, so community facility use. And as said, the proposed development includes eighty-three units. Fifty units are supportive housing units for individuals living with HIV/AIDS, and the remaining thirty-three units are affordable housing units. Counseling offices to provide residents with onsite supportive services and multipurpose rooms are located at the cellar and subcellar levels. And no parking is proposed as part of this development, and a publicly accessible stairway connecting East Hundred and Sixty-first Street and Eagle Avenue, and bridging the significant elevation difference between these two streets is part of the proposed development. The publicly accessible stairway is to be maintained in accordance with a restrictive declaration. The building base height would rise to sixty feet or six stories, uh, with an overall height of approximately hundred-and-thirty-two feet. Shown here is the site plan for the proposed development. Uh, the proposed building, uh, has two lobbies, uh, one at the subcellar level providing building access on East Hundred and Sixty-first Street, and the other at the ground floor level, uh, on Eagle Avenue. Uh, as you can see here, yards are provided on both frontages, allowing for landscape areas, and expanded sidewalk at the East Hundred and Sixty-first Street building entrance, as well as a publicly accessible stairway, uh, between Eagle Avenue and East Hundred and Sixty-first Street. An improved courtyard will be provided to the rear of the existing multifamily residential buildings, located within the rezoning area, as you can see here at the top middle of your screen. Uh, shown here is the proposed zoning map change. Uh, currently, the rezoning area is zone R six, and the R six district is mapped across those properties generally fronting on Eagle Avenue. And the western half of the block, the, the part that fronts on Third Avenue, is in a C four dash four district, and proposed is a zoning map amendment to rezone the proposed rezoning area to a R seven dash two zoning district. The proposed R seven dash two zoning district permits more bulk and a higher FAR for both residential and community facility uses, um, than the existing R six district. It's important to note that pursuant to zoning resolution section twenty-four dash hundred-and-eleven, the maximum FAR for philanthropic or nonprofit institutions with sleeping accommodations, and that is the proposed use for this development site, is limited to three-point-four-four. And that brings us to another action, the requested special permit. As mentioned, as of right, the maximum FAR for philanthropic or nonprofit institutions with sleeping accommodations in an R seven dash two district is limited to three-point-four-four. Uh, per zoning resolution section seventy-four dash nine oh three, the City Planning Commission may modify the maximum FAR and apply the community facility FAR, which is a six-point-five in an R seven two district, to those philanthropic or nonprofit institutions with sleeping accommodations. And in order to grant a special permit, the commission shall find that the distribution of bulk on the zoning lot will not unduly obstruct access of light and air to adjoining properties or public streets, and will result in satisfactory site planning and satisfactory urban design relationships to adjacent streets and the surrounding area. Secondly, the commission shall find that the proposed facility will not require any significant additions to the supporting services of the neighborhood, or that provision for adequate supportive services has been made. And thirdly, the commission shall find that the streets providing access to such use will be adequate to handle the traffic generated thereby, or provision has been made to handle such traffic. Uh, in the filed statement of findings, the applicant concludes that the proposed development, uh, meets the here-stated criteria, and the statement of findings is made available, uh, to you all, um, for review. Uh, here is another action, the zoning tax amendment to map, uh, mandatory inclusionary housing options one and two, and this is the map that goes with that zoning tax amendment. Uh, the area is co-terminus with the proposed rezoning area. And to conclude, the applicant, O G A R, Inc., seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone from the existing R six to a R seven dash two zoning district, a special permit to allow the community facility floor area ratio to apply to philanthropic or nonprofit institutions with sleeping accommodations, and a zoning tax amendment to amend Appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish, uh, an M I H area co-terminus with rezoning area. The approval of these land use actions would allow for the redevelopment of the now vacant development site with the new eleven-story plus cellar and subcellar, fifty-five-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-four square feet community facility building with eighty-three supportive and affordable housing units, as well as counseling offices and multipurpose rooms to service, to service the building residents, as well as a publicly accessible stairway between the two bounding streets to be maintained in accordance with the restrictive declaration. Well, thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna start with Commissioner Marine.
Thank you for the presentation. Um, I have a few, few questions. One is, one is centered around, there was an old rail right-of-way that went through this property, I believe. Is, was that resolved already, or was it the, the adjacent property? I know it took, this property sat fallow for a, a long time because of some rail yard, or am I mistaken?
Um, it has sat vacant for a while. I know that there were, uh, there were buildings, uh, residential buildings and commercial buildings on the property before, but I think it has sat vacant since nineteen-seventy-nine. I'm not sure about the railroad right-of-way, but I can check back in whether that, uh...
Then, my, my, my other question would be, um, you mentioned cellar, so you mentioned activities in the cellar for the, for the clients. And from the rendering that I see up here, and if you have an Eagle Avenue address, I'm going to assume that you're using Eagle Avenue as your zero datum, creating those two cellars that are below Eagle Avenue datum, that then allow for the two sellers to have windows. Is that correct? That flank onto Third Avenue?
Um, I would have to check back in to answer your question.
Okay. And then, the last one, one is, uh, the stair that's coming down, I, I see that it's running parallel to Eagle and parallel to the eastern facade of the building. Is that correct? Is that how it's intended to go? And then it's, it's gonna go, it's a public stair that's gonna be open twenty-four-seven that people can walk down on North Sixty-first Street?
Yeah, the, um, it does run, um, like, sort of north-south approximately, uh, like, alongside Eagle Avenue.
Correct.
Um, and the restrictive declaration spells out that it should be open to the public twenty-four-seven.
And then, the, the other two questions that I have is, is, and I'm, I'm, maybe you don't have the answer, otherwise you would share it with us. The, the thirty-three units that are gonna be M I H, do we have a breakdown of unit sizes and AMIs for those? And my next question is gonna be to the fifty-five units that are, or are considered sleeping accommodations. Are the tenants in those units permanent tenants, or is it intended that O G A R is gonna switch tenants around periodically?
I would have to check in with the applicant. And regarding your first question, I'm not familiar with the, uh, um, AMI levels and the unit size for, for the...
We can have the, we can have the applicant, that could address these.
Yeah, it's not a problem. And, and can you, can you just refresh us what determines a not-for-profit that has sleeping accommodations versus a not-for-profit that is renting out apartments? I'm trying to understand this, because I do know O G A R, and they have both models, so I'm really trying to understand why would this be considered different than a typical residence where... different than a typical residence where folks are coming in from the homeless system and they're renting apartments versus whatever it is that Ogar is doing? I mean, it, it would, it would help to understand how they're furnishing those units, because that also determines what type of accommodations they are.
All right.
So, so the, the not-for-profit, the sleeping accommodations in this case is, is a zoning term. It's, so it's, it's, um, they, they're not subject to the same, um, size requirements in term, for the entire, for the entire building, sort of overall. So they could do a whole building of studios.
Micro units.
Yeah, right.
I did one on a municipal property, correct?
Yeah, right, and so that's, that's the, that's the main zoning difference, and it's typically applied to supportive housing, um, because then, then there's usually a substantial amount of community facility like space that is actually serving, serving the, that population.
But it will not be a transient population, it'll be a permanent population, that's what I'm trying to.
That is actually something that the applicant needs to understand or to, to respond to. I, I'm not familiar. Paul, do you know?
No. No, but we'll, we'll confront with the applicant.
Yeah, 'cause they, they, they have both in this, you know, I will tell you that there's one that's run right up the block from where I live, and it's a problem. So I wanna understand for the community how they intend on running this.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles, followed by Commissioner Buzo.
So on that, on that question, I, I had pretty much the same question, um, uh, as Commissioner O'Malley. I mean, at the end of the day, is it, uh, who is running the facility? Who is developing the facility? If a nonprofit entity is developing it, then they are theoretically eligible for, uh, what's being proposed here. In other words, if a, if a, a private developer were doing this, then, uh, that developer could not avail itself of.
That's right.
Right?
That's right. So, uh, they, they have to be a not-for-profit to be a not-for-profit with sleeping accommodations for, for the purposes of zoning.
Right.
And, 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 and Tyn made this, this point repeatedly, but the, um, the floor area ratio is for as of right, not-for-profit with sleeping accommodations is actually in this district with M I H lower than the residential, uh, FAR. So there is not an incentive for people to abuse this absent the special permit which they are also seeking. So this, there, there is, you know, extra level of sort of scrutiny to, to, uh, get this, this type of facility.
Thank you, Commissioner Buzo.
Um, I have, I have a question kind of related to that, Ryan, this might be for you. Are these three actions, um, do they kind of get attached together to the site? Or if something were to happen with, like, I mean, the site challenges and down the line, they decided they couldn't actually build this supportive housing project on this site, could someone else not use the special permit, but then use the tax amendment and map amendment to build a different type of building there?
Yes.
With, and not have the special permit?
As residential.
Okay, so they're not necessarily all attached?
No.
Together, so.
Not, not, yeah.
The, the M I H is also, because the, the community facility use.
Right.
So, so it wouldn't have to, uh.
To the tax amendment and map amendment.
Yeah, for any future residential development, it would have to comply with M I H, but it's not something that this development specifically needs to comply with, because it's not residential.
Okay. So I think my, my other question, this didn't come up, but I presume, just to understand if this is being assumed financed by HPD, um, so if they could speak a little bit to that, if the applicant could. And even, you know, whether, I'd be curious how this topography, these topography challenges impact the cost and whether it actually fits within HPD's term sheets, given the cost limitations, um, of those term sheets. So the impact of the topography on how it, this will actually be financed.
Yeah, I can ask the applicant to speak to that. What I know is that they're relying on a, a mix of funding from both HPD, uh, the state, as well as private funding, uh, and they're looking to get light tax, uh, tax credits.
Thank you, uh, and just a request from me to the applicant for some better visuals, uh, when they come, uh, come back around, so.
Yep.
Um, thank you. Okay, with that, uh, this item is certified. Let's move on to the fourth item of ten today's agenda.
Uh, certainly. The, the fourth item on our agenda is the certification of a zoning map amendment in Brooklyn Community District Five. Our presenter is Joelle Miller.
Hello, Joelle, welcome.
Good afternoon. I just wanna say, it's Community District Four? Oh. Thank you. No worries. Correct. So, good afternoon. I will be discussing a rezoning application for eleven-sixty Flushing Ave. Private applicant, uh, private applicant eleven-sixty Flushing Avenue LLC seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from an M-one-one district to M-one-five district to facilitate the construction of a new development at eleven-sixty Flushing Avenue in Bushwick, Brooklyn, Community District Four. The proposed development consists of two buildings, a new single-story commercial building and a new nine-story mixed commercial and industrial-use building. Combined, the development totals five FAR and would be Hundred and Eighty-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-nine square feet. The developments conjoined include thirty-seven thousand eight hundred and forty-six square feet of industrial, thirty-six thousand seven hundred and thirty square feet of retail, and eleven hundred and fourteen nine hundred and eighty-three square feet of office uses. The project area is in the North Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone, located along Flushing Avenue and is located on the border of East Williamsburg and Bushwick. The project area includes six lots, and the development site includes two lots. The project area is along two major truck routes, Flushing Avenue and Wyckoff Avenue. At the northern corner of the project area is the L train Jefferson Avenue Street Station, and along Flushing Avenue are two B fifty-seven bus stops. The B fifty-seven provides service from Masbit Queens to Red Hook Ikea Terminal. The project area is in a M-one-one district. The surrounding area includes both M-one-one and M-one-two districts. M-one-one and M-one-two districts allow up to one and two FAR for industrial and commercial uses. Even though the project area and surrounding area are zoned as manufacturing districts, the character of the project area and surrounding area is mixed use. There are artist lot spaces, event venues, trading companies, restaurants, bars, and coffee shops within the project and surrounding area. Bushwick's Entertainment Center of Restaurants and Nightlife is in the surrounding area along Wyckoff Avenue and Jefferson Street. Bushwick's residential districts are located to the south and east of the surrounding area. There are four buildings within the project area and one vacant lot. The uses of the buildings within the project area vary. The development site consists of a vacant lot and a vacant one-story warehouse. Across from the development site along Flushing Avenue is a nine-story hotel under construction at Twenty-five Stewart Avenue. At the northernmost point of the project area along Wyckoff and Flushing Avenue is an unoccupied, unoccupied commercial retail space. The L Jefferson Street Station is to the left of the vacant building. Moving south along the project area, down Flushing Avenue, our additional entry point to the unoccupied commercial space. Moving further south down the project area along Flushing Avenue is a three-story building that contains a mix of uses, including studios and wholesale businesses. Traveling further south along Flushing Avenue is the development site consisting of the vacant lot and the large unoccupied one-story building. The one-story building occupies approximately half of the project area. The southern portion of the development site is adjacent to a one-story manufacturing-use building that is occupied by a lumber distribution business. The applicant is proposing a development that consists of two buildings, a new single-story commercial building and a new nine-story commercial and industrial-use building that will total approximately five FAR. Retail uses will be on the single-story building to the left and the first two floors of the nine-story building. Industrial uses will be on the second and third floor of the nine-story building, and office spaces will be on the third through eighth story of the building, and no parking will be provided. There would be entrances on the ground floor, to the ground floor retail area from Flushing Avenue and Jefferson Street, and the applicant is proposing an approximately twenty-eight-foot-wide pedestrian alleyway, alleyway through the site, which will also feature entrances to the retail spaces. The development will include three loading bays and one new thirty-foot curb cut along Flushing Avenue. The maximum height of the building would be Hundred and Thirty-eight feet, after setting back twenty-eight feet after the street wall height of eighty-five feet along both frontages. The first three floors would contain eighteen-foot-to-floor ceiling heights, while remaining, the remaining six floors will contain fourteen-foot-to-ceiling heights. Private open spaces will be located on the second and sixth floors as terrace areas and terrace areas, and nine new street trees will be planted along each frontage, which will be providing a total of eighteen new street trees. So to facilitate the development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to change the project area from M-one-one district to a M-one-five district. The existing M-one-one district permits up to one FAR for industrial or commercial uses, two-point-four FAR for community facility uses, and requires a high amount of parking. The proposed M-one-five would allow up to five FAR of, for industrial and commercial uses, six FAR for community facility uses, and does not require parking. A notice of completion of a draft environmental impact statement was issued on February tenth of this year, and the draft environmental impact statement did identify significant adverse impacts with respect to traffic and pedestrian concerns, and mitigation measures to these adverse traffic impacts and pedestrian concerns are identified in the draft environment impact statement and will be explored further in the filed environmental impact statement. So according to Local Law Seventy-Eight of Two Thousand and Twenty-One, effective June first of Two Thousand and Twenty-Two, this application does require a racial equity report because the application is seeking to change the permitted floor area of a building over Hundred thousand square feet in a manufacturing district. I'm gonna come back to that slide. According to the equity report, six percent of Bushwick residents identify as Asian, fifteen percent identify as Black, non-Hispanic, fifty-one percent identify as Latino, and twenty-three percent as White, non-Hispanic. So, according to the report done, there is gonna be approximately a thousand four hundred and eighty-eight new jobs coming to the Bushwick area because of this development. And in summary, this is a private application to go from a M-one-one to M-one-five district to create a development that consists of two buildings. Thank you, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you. Um, let me, uh, thank you for that presentation. I, I think we were just remarking on the number, the number of jobs, the sheer number of jobs in a single site, which is a lot. Um, um, I think, well, you can tell me if that's right or wrong, but, uh, it seems like a, a, a significant number. Um, just one, one question here, which, um, I'm interested in. They have chosen to split off that building, uh, to have retail on one side separate with the pathway in between. Now, it, you know, it seems to work from a design perspective, but I'm interested in knowing what their rationale was for doing that as opposed to any other configuration which would have allowed them to have that retail space connected to the, actually connected to the building.
Okay. I'm not sure, but I am going to defer to the applicant. Thank you.
Commissioner Kramani and Commissioner Benjamin.
Thank you. Thanks, Joelle, for the presentation. Um, yeah, my question is about the jobs. It would be great to hear from the applicant, perhaps who, what kind of business they anticipate coming in. Um, and, yeah, it's a, it's a very high number.
That information I do have. So they had worked with Evergreen, who basically works with, um, industrial developers to try and find tenants, and so they were in the works with speaking to different people in the creative design field about recording studios, podcast studios, architecture, studio spaces, entertainment and retail, talking to restaurants, theaters, music venues, and then also with recreation and manufacturing. With recreation, they were talking to ping-pong tenants, climbing gym tenants, and then for the manufacturing space, they were speaking to breweries, clothing fabricators. So they do have different people in different sectors that they are speaking to.
Thanks very much. We'll ask them directly when they get here. Perfect.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Benjamin.
My question has to do with the distribution also of the, the basic three uses. Um, one, the retail, and does it need a special permit if it's over Ten thousand square feet?
A special permit?
For the retail in a manufacturing zone?
I'm not sure.
That is by establishment. So if they are doing, did, did I, okay, okay, yeah, it's by establishment. So if they're doing, uh, one establishment over Ten thousand square feet, yes. But if they have Ten thousand square feet and they intend to do that, and, and it may be.
Why they kept that separate little building, I'm assuming.
Yeah, that may be one reason, and it also, there's also a scenario where they go through, they get this building, and they have a tenant who wants to get that special permit, and then they would come back for that. Right.
Thank you for that. Um, and my second question is about the office space. I mean, in this market that we seem to have where office space is not being utilized, and we're looking for ways to more fully utilize existing office space that we have, it seems highly speculative that a Hundred and Something Thousand Square Feet of office space is going to be absorbed and used and produce Nine Hundred Jobs, because most of the jobs, it would seem, will correspond to that Hundred and Something Square Feet of office space.
Understood.
And particularly, is there an office market that you're aware of? I know Flushing Avenue, which is a major truck route between Brooklyn and Queens. Is, is there an office market there? And do they have them now? Other than WeWork?
Uh, thank you for the question. So, um, uh, first off, I just wanna clarify, on the job numbers for the R E R, it's actually for the site as well as the projected, uh, site. So it's, it's both, um, and, and the applicant can, can respond to that. Um, and secondly, uh, we have spent a lot of time looking at this area pre-COVID, um, as part of the North Brooklyn Industrial Business Zone, uh, report and study. Um, and I would say that it, as part of this, it was looking for, uh, areas close to transit to support job growth in a variety of sectors, office being one of them, but also kind of these maker spaces, creative, uh, workspaces. Um, you know, obviously, COVID has kind of changed how we think about office space across the city, um, and so in this sense, it is, it is a speculative proposal. That said, we think that the kind of, the, the bones of the neighborhood exist in a way that there's the L train subway station entrance, um, and there's an opportunity for people to work closer to where they live, uh, if they so choose. I'm not saying that this is gonna get filled up tomorrow, the space, but, um, we think that in terms of medium and long-term planning, uh, increasing density for these kind of job spaces on top of transit is, is an opportunity.
And just, just to add, the vision for the applicant was for this space to be like a creative and design office space, so not like a traditional office space. And so it would be where podcast studios are, digital agency, artist studios, so it wouldn't be a traditional type of office space.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation, and, and just to sort of highlight a couple things, uh, that would be great to see, uh, the response once this moves forward, uh, have to do with, uh, the relationship between the proposed development and local community-based planning priorities. I'm specifically interested in the relation between the proposed, um, eh, uses with, uh, the future of the IBC one, but perhaps most importantly, the relationship with the Bushwick Brownfield Opportunity Area, which includes the site, and had very specific, uh, goals centered by Family Services Network New York, El Puente and other local parks. Thank you.
Thank you. I will pass that along to the applicant to answer. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Kramani.
Thank you. And following up on that, um, on what Commissioner Osorio said, I would also encourage the applicant to go visit six-thirty Flushing Avenue, which is not too far, which is a maker space incubator, pretty big building, um, that also has nonprofit community-based organizations in that, in that. building, um, that also has nonprofit community-based organizations in that, in that space, just as a, to see what's already there.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. With that, uh, this item eleven sixty Flushing is certified. Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
Uh, and we will move on to our next item.
Uh, the fifth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map amendment, uh, in Brooklyn Community District eleven and a zoning text amendment in Community District eleven, and presenting for the first time, the commission is Demetrius McLester.
All right, Demetrius, welcome. Glad to have you here.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Geronick and Commissioners. Hope everyone's having a great start to their week. This is an application for the All-Star Home Care Agency for a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to facilitate a mixed-use residential development in Bensonhurst, Brooklyn, Community District eleven. The proposed actions would create a new six-story development, including twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet of residential space comprising twen- of twenty-seven units, six of which would be income-restricted, and eight thousand one hundred and nine square feet of community facility space at sixteen fifty-six West Tenth Street. The project area is located in Bensonhurst, Brooklyn, Community District eleven on West Tenth Street, nestled in between Avenue P and Kings Highway. This is an aerial view facing the east-west orientation, showing the development site in blue and the project area in orange. The interior blocks along residential streets of West Eighth, Tenth, and Eleventh Streets are predominantly one- and two-story detached family homes. West Tenth Street is a narrow sixty-foot-wide residential street. Quentin Road and Kings Highway, both of which are eighty-foot-wide streets, intersect at the southern edge of the block and are east-west corridors that include commercial and residential uses within the surrounding area. The surrounding blocks contain six- and eight-story mixed-use residential apartment buildings along Kings Highway to the south and Avenue P to the north. Project area is well-served by public transit, being located just three blocks from the subway station of Kings Highway, which is like off to the bottom left, just outside of the view of the slide, with N, Q, and W train service towards Manhattan and additional neighborhoods to the south. In regards to bus service, the B-82 and Express SBS B-82 also travel along Kings Highway connecting Bensonhurst to Flatlands and Spring Creek. Much of the surrounding area and development site was rezoned in two thousand and five as a part of the Bensonhurst rezoning, which changed the zoning from R-six to an R-five-B. The overall goal of the rezoning was to prevent out-of-scale development in mid-block areas and support medium-density buildings along corridors. The Bensonhurst rezoning was also implemented before the creation of inclusionary housing. Kings Highway and Quentin Road are intersecting corridors that serve as commercial and transit corridors for the area, with Kings Highway harboring a majority of services and small businesses, while Quentin Road contains single and multifamily housing. The project area in small, the project area is north of Kings Highway and is still currently zoned as an R-five-B. R-five-B is a low-density contextual district with FAR of one-point-three-five that permits detached and semi-detached buildings, which generally results in three-story row houses. The maximum street wall height is thirty feet, above at which the building is set back to thirty-three feet with parking required for sixty-six percent of units. Now I'll walk you through a few photos of the existing conditions. These are views of the current development on West Tenth Street, a senior adult daycare facility named Better Living Community Center, which is located on the southwest side of the block. The community facility has been there since two thousand and thirteen and will utilize the ground, cellar, and subcellar floors once construction is completed. The current daycare utilizes approximately nine thousand five hundred and forty-seven square feet, and the proposed development will utilize seven thousand nine hundred and forty-five square feet, with a additional twenty-one hundred square feet of outdoor community area. The adult daycare accommodates approximately eighty to a hundred people per day, which will not change with the subjective proposal. For additional context to the proposal, the project area also includes Lot twenty-two. Picture to the right of the development site, Lot twenty-two is a six-story apartment building with a built FAR of four-point-one-five. The applicant proposes a development with approximately twenty-seven dwelling units, with six of which would be income-restricted to residents averaging eighty percent AMI and below, in accordance with MIH option one. The development will rise to a height of sixty feet with no setback, with ground floor and subcellars containing eight thousand one hundred and nine square feet of community facility space and twelve off-street parking spaces. The parking spaces would be accessible via nine-foot-wide curb cut. To facilitate the development, the applicant is requesting a zoning map amendment to change the R-five-B district to an R-six-A district. The rezoning area will cover lots twenty-two, twenty-eight, parts of Lot twenty-four on the west side of West Tenth Street, starting at twenty-three hundred and twenty feet to South Avenue P and a hundred feet north of Kings Highway. The proposed district R-six-A permits a maximum FAR of three-point-six within a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The base height can be between forty feet and seventy-five feet, with a maximum build height of eighty-five feet. Off-street parking is normally required for fifty percent of the dwelling units, but not required in income-restricted housing units. The zoning text amendment will amend Appendix F and establish MIH area with options one and two. Option one requires that at least twenty-five percent of residential floor area must be permanently income-restricted and affordable to households an average of sixty percent AMI. Option two requires at least thirty percent of residential floor area be permanently income-restricted and affordable to houses, households within an AMI of eighty percent. As of June first, two thousand and twenty, certain property owners applying for land use changes must produce a racial equity report. These reports will assist in racial equity discussions during ULEP and will be publicly available on New York City's zoning application portal, where union use applications are also publicly available. The demographic makeup of this neighborhood is forty-four percent Asian, non-Hispanic, thirty-six percent white, non-Hispanic, sixteen percent Latino Hispanic, and only one percent African-American, non-Hispanic. Some contextual statistics for the area are as follows. The average percentage of residents under the age of eighteen is approximately twenty-two percent, while the percentage of residents over the age of sixty-five is approximately fifteen percent, both of which are either at or exceed New York City medians for the category. Over fifty percent of the neighborhood identifies as rent burden, and over forty-seven percent self-identify as having limited English proficiency, both of which exceed New York City medians. The annual median income for the area is fifty-five thousand six hundred and forty-nine dollars. The proposed development will contain a total of twenty-seven residential units, of which six will be income-restricted pursuant to MIH, and twenty-one units will be market rate. Pursuant to MIH option one, the six income-restricted units comprise at least twenty-five percent of the proposed development's residential floor area at a weighted AMI of sixty percent. Additionally, eleven percent of the units will be available at forty percent, and there will be no more than three income bands, with no band greater than a eighty percent AMI. In conclusion, All-Star Home Care Agency is filing an application seeking a zoning map amendment to change an R-five-B district to an R-six-A district and a zoning text amendment to, to map an MIH area in unison, bless you, in unison with the, the rezoning area. They are proposing a new six development, six-story development with approximately twenty-five thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet of residential space and eight thousand one hundred and nine square feet of community facility space. Development will comply with MIH option one. This concludes my presentation. I'm ready to deal with any questions you may have.
Excellent. Thank you, Demetrius. That was totally clear, uh, and I appreciate that. And, um, I only have one question. The eight thousand square foot community facility, that will be for the Better Living Community Center, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Murray.
One clarifying question, Demetrius, and welcome. You, you mentioned six units are MIH and the twenty-one are, are market, and, and at, and you also said that at no point will anybody, any of the units go above eighty. That's only for the seven units, the six units that are in the low, very low income categories.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, that's it. We're certified. Thank you, Demetrius. Excellent job. Bravo and welcome. Okay, let's go to the next one, Ryan.
Certainly. The sixth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment and a special permit in, uh, Brooklyn Community District twelve. Our presenter is Josh Vogel, who I believe is on Zoom.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, next slide, please. This is a pre-hearing follow-up for a private application for a zoning map amendment from an M-one-two, M-two-one, and R-six to a C-four-four-A and R-six-B, and zoning text amendment to Appendix F and a zoning special permit to facilitate a new commercial development that includes the expansion of an existing supermarket and new office space. The application was certified on November seventh, two thousand and twenty-two, and the public hearing will be this Wednesday, February fifteenth. Next slide, please. Project's located at fourteen fifty-nine Thirty-Eighth Street in Borough Park, Community District twelve, Brooklyn. Next slide. Here, we're looking at the project area, which is bounded by Thirty-Eighth Street to the south, Fifteenth Avenue to the east, Thirty-seventh Street to the north, and Fourteenth Avenue to the west. Greenwood Cemetery, as we can see in the top left, is about four blocks to the northwest, and the elevated subway runs along McDonald Avenue with the FNG service at Church Avenue, just east of the project area. And directly north of the project area, on the corner of Thirty-seventh and Fourteenth, is Brooklyn Square, which is a six-story, four-hundred-and-forty-thousand-square-foot office complex that spans most of the block. And development site, um, which we can see with a star, is mid-block on Thirty-Eighth Street, and it's called Paperific. It's a kosher supermarket. Next slide, please. The surrounding area is predominantly mixed use, with residential uses consisting mostly of lower-scale, single- or two-family homes. There are also some medium-density apartment buildings. They're mostly along the avenues. Um, non-conforming row homes are found immediately west of and in the project area. There are also several industrial and commercial uses along Thirty-Eighth and Thirty-seventh Streets, including warehouses, a gas station, a bakery, printing supplies manufacturer, and a building material supplier. The surrounding area also contains several community facility uses, most of which are synagogues and yeshivas. The project area is located in a R-six, M-one-two, and M-two-one zoning district. M-one-two and M-two-one districts are mapped over portions of the project area, as well as the immediate north and south. These districts permit light industrial uses, as well as office and retail uses at an FAR of two and four-point-eight for community facility. And, uh, in M-one-two and M-two-one districts, supermarkets cannot exceed ten thousand square feet. The area is well-served by public transit. The F is point-three miles southeast at Dittmas Avenue, and FNG, as I mentioned earlier, at Church Avenue, is point-four miles northeast. The B-sixteen and B-thirty-five buses run along Fourteenth Avenue with a stop on Fourteenth, one block west of the development site. And lastly, Dome Playground, operated by the New York City Parks Department, is located one block east of the project area. Next slide, please. So here's a view looking north on Thirty-Eighth Street, directly at the development site, Paperific, a kosher supermarket. Uh, the light blue building to the left is used as office space for the supermarket, and both of these sites are applicant-owned. Next slide, please. So just moving, um, kind of down Thirty-Eighth Street, now looking, again, looking north from Thirty-Eighth, just west of the development site, these two-story, one- and two-family row homes that we're seeing were constructed in nineteen oh one and are legally non-conforming. Next slide, please. Now we're looking northwest from the corner of Fifteenth and Thirty-Eighth. The building on the corner is a synagogue. Next slide, please. Moving north along Fifteenth Avenue, we're looking southwest from the corner of Thirty-seventh. The Fifteenth Avenue frontage seen in this view includes vacant lots and a warehouse for building supplies. Next slide, please. Now looking directly west down Thirty-seventh Street, we can see the project area on the left and Brooklyn Square on the right. Next slide, please. Now looking south from Thirty-seventh Street, we see lots fifteen and seventeen of the development site, currently used as parking for the supermarket. Um, both lots fifteen and seventeen are applicant-owned, and these fifty-foot-deep lots along Thirty-seventh also make up the former Culver L, um, railroad right-of-way, which I'll talk about, uh, in a couple more slides. Next slide, please. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a new hundred-four-thousand-square-foot four-FAR commercial building. The ground floor would be used for the new Paperific supermarket. The second floor would be used as office space for the supermarket, primarily to accommodate its growing online ordering. Floors three through five would contain office space with open floor plans designed to accommodate a combination of co-working spaces and individual offices. The five-story building would rise to sixty-three feet and set back on the third and fourth floors. Open terraces would be provided for each office floor. Next slide, please. The applicant's proposing a zoning map amendment to rezone the project area from R-six, M-one-two, M-two-one to C-four-four-A and R-six-B. The C-four-four-A district would facilitate the development of the new supermarket and office space, and the R-six-B would bring the adjacent row homes into conformance and reflect their existing use and scale. Next slide, please. C-four-four-A districts are commercial districts with an R-seven-A residential equivalent. They permit medium-density contextual buildings with residential, commercial, and community facility uses. Commercial and community facility uses are permitted up to four FAR and can rise to eight stories or eighty-five feet. Next slide, please. R-six-B districts are typical rowhouse contextual districts where quality housing regulations are required. They permit a maximum FAR of two-point-two with MIH at a maximum height of fifty-five feet. Next slide, please. A zoning text amendment to Appendix F of the zoning resolution is being requested to designate the project area as an MIH area. The applicants are proposing to map MIH options one and two coterminous with the project area. Option one requires twenty-five percent of the residential floor area must be income-restricted for residents with incomes averaging sixty percent of the AMI. Option two requires that thirty percent of the floor area be income-restricted for residents with incomes averaging eighty percent of the AMI. While the proposed development does not include any residential component, if residential floor area was developed in the project area, permanently income-restricted housing would be required. Next slide, please. And lastly, the applicant is seeking a special permit pursuant to, uh, zoning resolution seventy-four six eighty-one to permit development over the right-of-way or yard where railroad or transit use has been permanently discontinued. This special permit is required because lots fifteen and seventeen, which front Thirty-seventh Street, are along the former railroad right-of-way of the Culver Elevated Shuttle, which was an elevated subway line that ran from nineteen fifty-four to nineteen seventy-five, running directly along Thirty-seventh Street from Fort Hamilton Parkway to McDonald Avenue. The elevated structure was demolished in nineteen eighty-five, and this former transit right-of-way has been subject to special permits along the corridor of the past thirty years and has been almost entirely developed. Uh, due to this adjacent development along this right-of-way, future transit uses along the corridor are just not possible. Next slide, please. On December thirteenth, Community Board Twelve held a public hearing on the application and voted in favor, with twenty-seven approving, two abstaining, and none in opposition. While they did not include any considerations in their recommendation, the Land Use Committee and Board both expressed widespread support during the hearings. Next slide, please. On January twelfth, the Brooklyn Borough President held a public hearing on the application, and on February eighth submitted a recommendation to approve with conditions. Those conditions include guaranteeing a fully commercial development in supermarket, incorporating resiliency and sustainability measures, installing rain gardens as part of the builder's pavement plan to retain local contractors, and to reserve portions of the commercial space for smaller maker uses at below-market rents. Next slide, please. In conclusion, this is a private application for a zoning map amendment from M-one-two, M-two-one, and R-six to C-four-four-A and R-six-B, a zoning text amendment to map MIH coterminous with the project area, and a zoning special permit to develop over a former railroad right-of-way. The proposed actions would facilitate the development of a hundred-four-thousand-square-foot commercial development at fourteen fifty-nine Thirty-Eighth Street in Borough Park, Brooklyn, Community District twelve. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Great. Josh, thank you very much. Um, I think my, my only question may, uh, may have bear little relevance to this conversation, but I'm looking at the image, this one right here. And it, it doesn't really look like a supermarket. That's all I have to say. I, you know, I, I, I would say, it confuses me a little bit because I know that it is a proposal to expand the supermarket and to add above the ground floor office spaces, but it looks like a pure office building to me. So I, I just make that observation. I know we're going to see them on, on Wednesday, but, uh, I don't know if there, if you have any insights or observations of your own or any, anything you can add there, but, you know, I, I know I have seen this before, but I, I'm just, um, going to make this observation now.
Yeah, thank, thank you for the question and observation. So the Thirty-Eighth Street frontage will include both the supermarket entrance and the entrance to the, um, office building. Um, and the Thirty-seventh Street, so the backside, uh, would be where the loading, um, would be and parking. Um, beyond that, in terms of the design and, and how it, you know, reflects the use, uh, the applicants will be here in person on Wednesday and can definitely speak to that.
And this is Thirty-Eighth Street. This is the one which has both the office and the, the supermarket entrance.
Market on the ground floor that we're looking at in the rendering.
Which, which one of these entrances is for the supermarkets?
I actually am not entirely sure, so I'll let the applicant speak to that.
Okay, all right. Well, we'll, we'll catch them on Wednesday. All right. Let me see if there are other questions. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Building on the Chair's question, and thank you for the presentation. Um, I, uh, I wanted to know whether the, or, well, I want to know if- Um, I uh, I wanted to know whether the, or, well, I want to know whether the applicant has already expressed um, eh, any type of response regarding the BP's recommendations, particularly the point that I think builds pretty much on what we just heard in terms of the equivalency of the C four-four A and the R seven A. And the uh, the fact that that could potentially lead to residential development. And so I'm wondering if, if, what has been the response? If you have heard anything so far, hoping that we could definitely get to hear that uh, at the hearing, but I, I, I'm wondering if there's been any responses to A, the IDL ads, there be any written commitments uh, to DOB? Uh, that there's an application to fresh incentives so that we can see that there, there's an, a demonstrated sort of like commitment to the supermarket on one end. I have another question, but I'll stop there and see what you think.
Sure. Thank you for the question. Um, yeah, the applicant is not locked into the, the use, but with the special permit to be able to have a through-block development that utilizes lots fifteen and seventeen, they will be locked into that site plan, um, which includes the supermarket. There would, there could be a scenario where they just develop the lots that front thirty eighth Street that could have a, just be a residential building. Um, but I will note that the applicant, uh, Paperific is a, a long-time uh, member of the community with very close ties. One of the reasons why the board was so um, favorable, um, and, you know, they, they're looking, this applicant, they came to us with this application because their business has been so successful, they, they're looking to expand. Um, they, they want to continue operating on this street in this community, so they have not expressed any plans to leave, but the applicant can definitely speak more to that. Um, and potential fresh um, incentives. While they do not need um, any additional floor area, uh, they could take advantage of um, financial incentives through EDC.
Thank you, thank you. And that's the similar, a similar question regarding um, the vulnerability of thirty seventh Street to storm flood, uh, flooding. Is there anything that, have they responded in any way regarding that, those recommendations from the Borough President?
Yes, actually going back to certification when this was brought up, um, they have uh, prepared uh, responses and what they're going to do in regards to the builder's pavement plan on their site, um, which they'll speak to on Wednesday.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Sure. Okay. With that, uh, thank you very much, Josh. Excellent, uh, and we will see this at a public hearing on Wednesday, two days, so uh, we'll take up some of our follow-up questions there. Thank you for that presentation. Ryan, what's up next?
The seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendment in the Bronx Community District eleven, and Tim Dilling is back here to present.
Welcome back.
Thanks, Ryan, and yeah, good afternoon again, Commissioners. Um. See, the project is twenty-five sixty Boston Road rezoning and is on the agenda for pre-hearing. The application was certified on October twenty-fourth of last year. Um, the applicant, Boston Road Associates, uh, seeks a zoning map amendment and a zoning tax amendment of a site located at twenty-five sixty Boston Road, that's block forty-four forty, lot sixteen thirty and thirty-two, in the Allerton neighborhood of Bronx Community District eleven. The zoning map amendment is to rezone the site from the existing R six and C eight-one zoning districts to a R seven dash two zoning district with a C two-four commercial overlay. The zoning tax amendment to amend appendix F of the zoning resolution is to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area, options one and two, coterminous with the rezoning area. The proposed development is a new mixed-use primarily residential building with up to three hundred and thirty-three units of affordable housing, approximately nineteen thousand two hundred and eight, eighty-one square feet of commercial use, and that includes a fifteen thousand square foot uh, grocery store, six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square feet of community facility, and approximately a hundred and seventeen parking spaces. The applicant is the owner of lot sixteen, uh, that is where currently there's also a grocery store located, and the proposed development is intended to be built by a joint venture that includes the applicant and Slate Property Group. Uh, the area map shows the larger local context around in the development site. Uh, the site measures approximately fifty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy square feet of lot area and has about two hundred and eighty-six feet of frontage on Boston Road to the north, uh, two hundred and uh, twenty-one feet of frontage on Barnes Avenue to the west, and three hundred and twenty-six feet of frontage on Matthews Avenue to the east. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of one-story commercial and industrial buildings and residential buildings generally ranging from two to six stories in height. Several community facility uses such as a church and a school are located to the south of the development site. Here is an aerial photograph of the rezoning area highlighted in yellow and the surrounding neighborhood looking north to the north, the development site fronts on Boston Road. It's a hundred-foot wide street and a commercial corridor mainly lined with one-story commercial buildings in the vicinity of the development site. The block in which the development site is located is mainly comprised of residential buildings ranging from two to five stories in height. The development site is in the transit zone and well-served by public transportation. The Allerton Avenue Station, uh, serviced by both the two and five subway lines, is located about point three miles to the west of the development site. The site is also served by local bus route, uh, BX twenty-six, as well as B-line Route sixty, sixty-one, and sixty-two, and those run between the Fordham Metro North Station and the newer Shell Transit Center. Here and on the next few slides are photos of the existing site conditions, and the development site contains a one-story commercial building that's situated on the corner of Matthews Avenue and Boston Road, as you can see here. And as shown here, a two-story building containing a second-floor residential unit and um, a daycare center on the ground floor is located mid-block between the supermarket and the one-story commercial building that you saw on the previous slide. The existing grocery store entrance is located at the corner of Barnes Avenue and Boston Road. The thirteen thousand eight hundred square foot supermarket has an open parking lot with uh, fifty-five spaces and is accessible via two curb cuts on Barnes Avenue. Here's an illustrative rendering of the proposed development of twenty-five sixty Boston Road. Uh, you're looking in a southerly direction. Uh, the applicant intends to build a proposed development that includes a new ten-story building with three hundred and thirty-two affordable housing units plus one onsite superintendent unit. The applicant intends to finance the development through New York City Housing Development Corporation's Mix and Match Program, and that would require forty to sixty percent of the units to be affordable to households earning up to sixty percent of the area median income, or AMI, with the remaining units affordable to households earning up to a hundred and thirty percent of AMI. The proposed development also includes a fifteen thousand square foot supermarket, another four thousand two hundred and eighty-one square feet of commercial use, uh, and six thousand seven hundred and fifty-two square feet of community facility. The development includes a hundred and seventeen parking spaces, uh, fifty spaces would be provided at grade, and the remaining sixty-seven spaces will be in a cellar level. The building base height would rise to approximately seventy feet or six stories, uh, with an overall height of approximately a hundred and ten feet. The affordable units would include a mix of studio, one, two, and three-bedroom units, and building amenities would be accessible to tenants and include outdoor amenity spaces located at the sixth floor, uh, as well as indoor recreation rooms and bicycle parking. Here you see the ground floor plan of the proposed development. The applicant intends to provide fifty parking spaces accessory to the ground floor commercial uses at grade and accessible from Barnes Avenue. The supermarket entrance is located at the corner of Matthews Avenue and Boston Road, where the proposed development will provide a landscaped open space. Uh, it's important to note that during construction, the applicant intends to temporarily relocate the existing supermarket on-site to a temporary location near the development site. Shown here is the proposed zoning map change. Uh, currently, the development site is zoned R six and C eight-one. The C eight-one zoning district is mapped at a depth of a hundred feet measured from Boston Road, and the remainder of the development site and the block that it's located on as a whole is mapped R six. Proposes a zoning map amendment to rezone the site to a R seven dash two zoning district with a C two-four commercial overlay. The proposed R seven dash two zoning district permits more bulk and a higher FAR than the existing R six district. Uh, furthermore, the proposed R seven dash two district would allow for residential uses where they are currently not permitted under the existing C eight dash one zoning of a portion of the site, this portion that is on Boston Road. And in short, the C eight-one zoning district provides for automotive and auto-heavy commercial services with a permitted commercial FAR of one. The proposed C two-four commercial overlay would permit retail and commercial uses on the ground floor across the development site. And here you can see the map that goes with the zoning tax amendment to amend appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish an MIH area, both options one and two, coterminous with the rezoning area. Um, as I said, the project is proposed as an HPD Mix and Match term sheet project. Uh, HPD's Mix and Match program funds the new construction of mixed-income multifamily rental projects in which forty to sixty percent of the units are at low-income rents affordable to households earning up to eighty percent of area median income. The other forty to sixty percent of units have rents affordable to moderate and are middle-income households earning up to a hundred and twenty uh, percent of AMI. Uh, projects must have a range of affordability tiers, and HPD's subject is to be paired with other public and private sources. As you can see here, the proposed Mix and Match AMI levels, um, as like, as proposed by the developer, have changed slightly compared to what is shown uh, on the right-hand side of the slide here, and what was included in the racial equity report. On the left-hand side, on the top, the top table was, was included in the racial equity report, and has changed slightly with, um, what was included in the letter to Bronx Community District eleven uh, late last month. Um, just to be concrete, uh, now twenty-five percent of units is proposed for the forty-one fifty percent AMI band with the remaining forty percent of units in the eighty-one to ninety percent AMI band. Um, so it has changed a little bit, but not that much. And then in terms of the ULP update, uh, Community Board Eleven held a public hearing at the end of last year, and at the full board meeting that followed, a motion to support the proposal was voted on, provided that the city of New York meets and increases school, police, sanitation, infrastructure, so it's provided that overnight parking is available for building residents. Uh, the motion was voted down at the full board meeting, and no alternative motion was introduced and passed. Uh, to date, no recommendation has been submitted. However, Community Board Eleven intends to submit a non-compliant, as in non-compliant with the ULP recommendation, uh, later this month at the end of February. Uh, Bronx Borough President Gibson has submitted a favorable recommendation without conditions on January thirty-first. And to conclude, the applicant, Boston Road Associates, seeks a zoning map amendment to rezone from the existing R six and C eight-one to a R seven dash two zoning district with a C two-four overlay, and a zoning tax amendment to amend appendix F of the zoning resolution to establish an MIH area coterminous with the rezoning area. And the approval of these land use actions would allow for the redevelopment of the development site with a new mixed-use primarily residential building along Boston Road with up to three hundred and thirty-three affordable units, as intended by the applicant. Uh, thank you for your time, and please let me know if you have any questions.
Great, thank you. Two very quick ones for me. One is, uh, this development will include fifteen thousand square foot supermarket. Just confirming, that is not a fresh supermarket, correct?
That is not a fresh.
Okay, and um, uh, the other question that I had was about the parking spaces, the hundred seventeen parking spaces. Can you just, uh, forgive me if I missed this in your presentation, but the, the number of one seventeen as it relates to the three hundred thirty-three units of affordable housing, just tell us how that comes to be and what the rules are in this zoning district.
Yes, um, that's a good question. Um. So for the, currently for the supermarket, there are fifty-five spaces, and they, uh, the proposed development would meet the requirements for parking by providing um, fifty parking spaces for the uh, new supermarket. Uh, so they would go beyond what is required, actually, but sort of replacing kind the number of spaces there now. Um, and within the um, R seven dash two district, um, for income-restricted units as are proposed, um, because this is inside a transit zone, there would be no parking required. Um, but the applicant, uh, decided to provide sixty-seven residential parking spaces for the, for the units here. That would also be in line if, um, no, never mind.
Okay, so on the first piece about the supermarket, there's fifty-five existing and they're replacing them with fifty?
Correct.
So they're going down five on the supermarket parking?
That's right.
But they are going from a requirement of zero for a income-restricted, a hundred percent income-restricted project with, within the transit zone, to sixty-seven?
Correct.
Um, okay, uh, all right, well, we'll talk to them about that on Wednesday. Okay, let's see what other, uh, what other questions, uh, we'll have, if any. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, can you share a little bit what's been the response to the situation with the community board or the conversation with the community board?
Yes, um, so just to give a full overview, um, we certified, or you certified the application on October twenty-fourth. There was a public meeting with the Land Use Committee prior to that, so pre-certification, uh, on October twelfth, where the applicant shared more information about the project. Um, then as it was certified, there was a public hearing on December twenty-first, um, and there it was discussed, and the outcome of that was the motion that was put up to vote, there was a, um, a motion, uh, to approve, but like, required that like, the public infrastructure would be increased and that, um, parking would be available to the building residents. And the next day, there was the, um, the full board meeting, and there that motion did not pass, but there was no alternative motion introduced to issue a formal recommendation. And to date, we don't have a formal recommendation. It came back up at the full board meeting late January, it was like, around like the twenty-fifth, they meet on the last Thursday of the month. And um, there the item was tabled, um, uh, the reason for that, uh, that the board mentions with the, the applicant issued a letter, um, they received that, I think, the day of or the day prior, where they briefly outlined in like a two, three-page letter, a little bit more about the development, and to address any questions that came up earlier. Um, because the board felt that they didn't have enough time to consider what was in the letter, they tabled the item. Uh, so that was already like, that was late January, so it would have been non-compliant at that time uh, already. So they tabled it for the full board meeting, I think, Thursday, February twenty-third, and they'll discuss it again, and then they had intent to issue a non-compliant recommendation.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Tim. Thank you very much. Twenty-five sixty Boston Road, we will see you for a public hearing on Wednesday. Ryan, let's move on to the next.
Certainly. The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District Five. Our presenter is Scott Solomon, who will be joining us on Zoom.
Uh, good afternoon. Uh, just, so, Community District Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Hello, Scott.
Doing bad.
Good afternoon, sir.
Community Districts.
We're ready whenever you are or whenever the presentation is up.
Yeah, I'm just waiting for it to pop up, um. Uh, but, but as he's pulling it up, this is a private application by Tire Heaven LLC. They're seeking approval of a zoning map amendment to change the existing C one-three overlay on an R three-two zoning district to C two-three. This would facilitate legalization of a longstanding tire repair shop at two forty-five oh six South Conduit Avenue in the Rosedale, uh, District, uh, Rosedale Neighborhood in Queens Community District Thirteen. Uh, this application was certified as complete on November seventh, and the hearing is scheduled for February fifteenth. Uh, we can move on. Two slides from here, Jeff. Thank you. Uh, so the project area fronts the south side of South Conduit Avenue, which runs parallel to Sunrise Highway between Francis Lewis Boulevard and a hundred thirty-ninth Avenue. Uh, low-density commercial uses run South Conduit Avenue, and low-density residential uses are located to the north and south. A C one-three commercial overlay was established on the existing R three-two district in two thousand nine. Uh, on the north side of Sunrise Highway is the elevated Rosedale Royal Railroad Station, and just above that in blue is a satellite NYPD precinct and a new NYPD station house currently under construction. Uh, they're located in- Uh, they are located in a C one three overlay established in two thousand eighteen. Next slide, please. Uh, above is an aerial that is rotated, so we're looking south, so we can view the existing buildings a little closer. Uh, we're looking into the south side of South Conduit Avenue. To the left or east at lot twenty three is a gas station built prior to nineteen sixty one, currently operating pursuant to a BSA variance. Then lots twenty eight and fourteen make up the development site. They are considered two separate zoning lots because they share less than ten linear feet of common lot line to be merged as one zoning lot, but they are in common ownership by the applicant. Combined, the two lots uh serve as a tire showroom and tire installation facility, which are not allowed in C one districts. Tire shop began operation in two thousand nine as an illegal nonconforming use and has been receiving violations from the FDNY to correct the nonconformance. Uh, lot twenty eight is a through lot and includes a two story building with second floor dwelling unit that fronts South Conduit and two hundred and forty sixth street. And the ground floor is the applicant's tire repair shop that also extends a lot fourteen. Fourteen includes a two story building, a converted detached residential building with second floor dwelling unit. With the tire business continuing on the ground floor from the adjacent lot twenty eight. Lot twenty eight is primarily primarily where the repairs are done. Lot fourteen is a it's includes a tire sales showroom where with additional repair space. Uh, then lot twelve includes a two story building with ground floor office and second story that has two dwelling units, all conforming uses. Lot eight has a fast food restaurant and lot six is a one story commercial building with deli and retail uses all uh also non, excuse me, all also conforming uses. Next slide. So filing photos of the existing site conditions, uh, photo one on the left is a southeast view of the development site, the lot with converted residential buildings. That includes the ground for tire showroom and second floor residential. Photo two is a southwest view where you can see the second structure, the continuation of the repair facility and second story residential. Uh, that is the building with the red brick facade. Next slide, please. Uh, photo three in the left, southwest view of the gas station, again currently operating with a BSA variance. On the right is a southwest view, uh, where you can see the second, oh, excuse me, uh, on the right is a northwest view of the rear portion of lot fourteen. This through a lot portion of the development site that fronts two hundred and forty sixth street. Uh, this is the entrance to the second story dwelling unit. There's a legacy storefront that has been closed off. Uh, because the tire uh repair facility is located on South Conduit. Uh, but there's a curb cut and white gate that is located to the right accessing the repair facility. Next slide. And then photos five and six, uh, five, the fast food restaurant and one story retail building and photo six showing the two story mixed use building with ground floor office. Next slide. Uh, applicant is not seeking to alter the property with the proposed rezoning, but to legalize the use, which uh is only allowed in C two districts. FDNY has issued a violation because they have failed to provide a CFO or letter of no objection from DOB to operate the tire shop. Uh, the rezoning would correct this objection from the FDNY. Next slide. And to facilitate this legalization and allow the uh gas station to future, uh, in the future, seek a BSA special permit. Uh, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to establish a change to uh to change the C one three to C two three. Uh, the boundaries are not proposed to be changed here. Next slide. Uh, subsequent certification, community board thirteen uh voted unanimously support the application, thirty two in favor, none opposed. Next slide, please. And then uh, Queens Borough President, uh, move on to the next slide. Issue recommendation to approve the application with the condition that any future development have a minimum goal to include MWBE firms in hiring the local residents. And to add passive natural landscaping along the development site for better drainage. And this is for any potential future development, not. Uh, for the legalization being sought. Next slide. In conclusion, uh, for the applicant, the land use rationale is to reinforce the existing commercial character of the project area and expand the permitted uses. Provide stable zoning predictability to the subject properties and bring the development site in nonconforming use into conformance. Includes the presentation, uh, the applicant will be present uh to uh, uh, present their application. Any other questions you have on Wednesday? Thank you.
Great, thanks, Scott. So we will see them on Wednesday and be able to ask them directly any of our questions here. Uh, are there any questions for Scott at this point? Go ahead, Mr. Vice Chairman.
Uh, Scott, you did say that the uh property, uh, the applicant uh property in this case. Is owned by the same uh entity that owns the gas station and the nonconforming gas station. Did you say that?
No, I uh, maybe I I I mixed it up at one point, but the applicant only owns the development site. The gas station is not owned by the applicant.
Not owned by the applicant. Yeah, I just find it extraordinary that he's been operating, uh. As they say, open and notoriously for fifteen years and and not in conformance with the zoning code. It's it's a. It's a pretty audacious.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, with that, we will pick this one up again on Wednesday. Uh, and let us, let's stay in Queens, shall we, and move on to our next two items?
The the ninth item on our agenda is a prehearing review of a zoning map and zoning tax amendment and a special permit in Queens Community District Two. Our presenter is Teal Daly.
All right, good afternoon, Commissioners. This is a prehearing presentation for twenty three ten Queens Plaza South. This is a private application for a project located in Long Island City in Community District Two, and it was certified on October fourth of twenty twenty two. The proposed development is a twenty two story enlargement of an existing four story vacant loft building. And this would result in approximately three hundred twenty thousand square feet of commercial floor area. To facilitate the development, the applicant is requesting several land use actions. The first is a zoning map amendment that would rezone an M one five R nine district to an M one six R nine district. The second is a zoning text amendment that would change the Queens Plaza sub district of the special Long Island City mixed use district. The text amendment would establish an area D co terminals with the project area as well as maximum FARs and minimum and maximum base heights. And third, the applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to the Queens Plaza sub district text. And the special permit is actually built into the Queens Plaza sub district. And it provides a pathway for bulk modifications for any lot within the sub district. The applicant seeks to modify the distance between buildings and the street wall location requirements. The render on the slide shows the proposed development, which includes approximately thirteen thousand one hundred square feet of local retail. Seven thousand five hundred square feet of exhibit and community meeting space. Three hundred eight, three hundred thousand eight hundred square feet of office space as well as a rooftop terrace. Long Island City has long been identified as an important location to establish a central business district. Due to its location at the center of the city and its excellent access to infrastructure that includes eight different subway lines. This area has a long history of industrial uses producing a range of prewar loft buildings, many of which have industrial and commercial uses today. The special Long Island City mixed use district was established in two thousand one to leverage Long Island City's productive heritage. To support the continued growth of a mixed use neighborhood with an opportunity for high density commercial uses within a transit rich area. The map on the left shows the broader special Long Island City mixed use district. And for this application, I'll zoom into the Queens Plaza sub district, which is shown in the image on the right. And this district is intended to facilitate mixed use development and permits a variety of building types that generally have high lot coverage and strong street walls. The sub district also has the highest allowable densities within the broader special district to leverage the transit access at Queens Plaza and Court Square. There are three distinct sub areas within the sub district as identified by the maximum FARs and general bulk regulations. The development site is located in sub area B, which is indicated in light orange on the map. And the chart shows the basic zoning regulations of these three sub areas. For area B, the maximum FAR for all uses is eight and the base height must be between one hundred and one hundred fifty feet. In this area map, area B is shown by the blue outline, is shown by the blue outline. The project area is located on the western edge of the sub district, shown in pink. This transit rich location provides approximate access to four different stations within approximately a quarter mile of the site. On the map, there's Queens Borough Plaza as well as Queens Plaza and Twenty First Street Queens Bridge. And not shown on the map, but to the south of the project area is Court Square. Additionally, the Queens Borough Bridge Greenway runs along Queens Plaza North and connects to parks and other area bike lanes in the area as well as Manhattan. Although the special district was built to evenly weight floor area among residential and nonresidential uses. We've seen many, many residential towers constructed since twenty ten. To date, the district testing commercial growth occurred primarily in the retrofit of existing loft buildings. While the development of new commercial buildings typically relied on some form of city subsidy or disposition. Looking at the tax map, the project area is made up of two blocks, or I'm sorry, two lots on block four two five as indicated by the yellow lots on the tax map. Tax lot five is approximately twenty seven thousand square feet in area and is the development site, while tax lot one is just under fifteen thousand square feet in area. And a forty four, it's forty four story residential tower already exists on tax lot one. And the photo on the slide shows a view of the development site facing west from Queens Plaza South with the existing vacant four story loft building. And this photo shows a view of the development site facing north from Forty Second Road and Twenty Fourth Street. Where the development site is in the background and the existing forty four story residential tower is in the foreground. A zoning map amendment is requested to map an M one six R nine zoning district. And I'll just note here that the R nine portion of this pair district is not changing. It's only changing from an M one five to an M one six. And then the zoning text amendment would create area D within the Queens Plaza sub district. Together, the zoning map and the text amendments create a district that would have a maximum commercial and manufacturing FAR of fifteen. A community facility FAR of ten and a residential FAR of eight. The base height would remain between one hundred and one hundred fifty feet as in alignment with the Queens Plaza sub district. And ultimately, a fifteen FAR would be established at this site, which we do see in alignment with the goals of the special mixed use district. Because this would allow a more even mix of residential and commercial uses on a site located on a very wide street adjacent to the Queens Borough Plaza subway station. And the graphic on this slide just shows the zoning text amendment map that would be added to the Queens Plaza sub district text. Stepping into the proposed project, the proposed development would consist of a twenty two story commercial enlargement of the existing four story building. With no changes proposed to the existing residential building. Out of approximately three hundred twenty thousand square feet of proposed floor area. There would be approximately thirteen thousand square feet of local retail, seven thousand five hundred square feet of exhibit and community meeting space. And approximately three hundred thousand eight hundred square feet of office space. This would result in approximately six hundred thirty two thousand square feet in total floor area. Or a FAR of fifteen in consideration of the existing residential building. The rooftop of the existing industrial building is proposed as a landscaped amenity space with a restaurant. As well as some outdoor space accessory to office uses and publicly accessible outdoor space that would be accessible via an elevator to the public. The overall commercial building would rise to twenty six stories or four hundred ten feet with a one hundred fifty foot base height. And the plan on the slide shows the ground floor plan. These uses would include local retail, the office lobby, the Eagle Electric exhibit to display former building owners' products and history, as well as the loading area and accessory bicycle parking. Enferences for the retail exhibit and office uses would be located along Queens Plaza South and Twenty Fourth Street. And the loading dock would be accessed on Twenty Fourth Street via an existing curb cut. And the seller floor plan would be occupied, the seller would be occupied by local retail uses and accessory gym, mechanical space. And a two thousand four hundred square foot community meeting space. The entrance to the community meeting space would be located on Twenty Third Street. And the retail space would be accessed via a ground level entrance located on Queens Plaza South. The streets surrounding the development site are not level, so just to note that the community facility space is accessed from the street, but there would be. A slight step down to get into that community meeting space. The applicant is requesting a special permit for two types of bulk modifications applying to the street walls and the minimum distance between buildings. The street wall modification would enable the facade of the fifth floor to be recessed on three sides to a depth of forty feet. Which would help create visual distinctions between the existing building and the proposed enlargement. And this would also create space for the rooftop terrace, which would occur below the one hundred foot minimum base height. The recess would have a depth of forty feet and a height of twenty four feet. Above the recess, the base of the building would rise to a maximum base height of one hundred fifty feet, which is consistent with the bulk regulations of the sub district. And second, the applicant is proposing a reduction to the distance between buildings from eighty feet to sixty feet. And this would start at the sixth floor where the residential units in the existing building begin facing the proposed commercial building. This reduction allows for larger commercial floor plates. That would make the proposed development more feasible and attractive to commercial tenants. The floor plates range in area from four thousand square feet to over twenty seven thousand three hundred square feet in area. And this variety of sizes can be utilized by a variety of different tenants. And looking at the site plan, you can see how with the the pink arrows wrapping around the proposed development. The shape of the commercial building form preserves views and mitigates the impact of reducing the space between buildings. At just that kind of pinch point in the middle um of the site plan. And on this slide are the findings that are presented to the special permit. These findings include um. That the bulk modification will aid in achieving the general purposes and intent of the special district. And then skipping to the next bulk modification, that the bulk modification will enhance the distribution of bulk on the zoning lot. And bulk modifications will also permit adequate access of light and air to surrounding streets and properties. And that the bulk modification will relate harmoniously to the character of the surrounding area. Within U L R P view thus far, the community board has voted to approve all the actions with thirty four in favor and zero, uh, zero opposed. This, the community board and the applicant worked out a community benefit agreement and in this agreement. They agreed that the applicant would use union labor for construction and service personnel. And the applicant would provide two thousand four hundred square feet of public community space with fit out for public meetings as well as a public restroom. The applicant will also provide two thousand one hundred square feet of publicly accessible open space on the rooftop of the fifth floor. The applicant also agrees to provide thirty nine e bike and twenty three traditional bicycle parking spaces. As well as free wifi for public use on premises. The applicant is also looking into providing offsite wifi through NYC mesh. The applicant has agreed to work with local organizations on tenanting retail with appropriate tenants. And they plan to retain and renovate the Eagle Electric building and provide a historic exhibit. The Borough President also voted to um approve the actions. His conditions include adhering to the community benefit agreement as well as a thirty percent goal to include NWBE firms in local hiring. He also asked to submit plans for advertising and wayfinding to inform the public of the public spaces that are accessible in the building. And these plans would be submitted to the local council member and the Borough President. He also asked the applicant to provide passive natural landscaping along the development site for better drainage. And to explore lead silver and gold certification, so as provide discounted office space and to work with local organizations to identify users. And um, one of the retail tenants could be a grocery store at the request of the community board. And finally, he also requested that the applicant reserves gyms, reserve the seller gym space for public use on nights and weekends. Um, and this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you, Teal. Okay, um, all right, this one, it's complicated, but it's maybe even, it's maybe less complicated than it sounds. We have a. Four story enlargement to a twenty two story building.
Yes.
Zoning map goes from essentially M one five to M one six.
Yes.
Uh, a new area in the sub district, which enables the maximum FAR that exists among all the sub districts, correct?
Well, the the maximum.
A new FAR?
Yeah, would apply to just the site and creates that. How more half and half mix of residential, nonresidential uses.
So is the current area has a max FAR of eight for everything and this would enable fifteen for commercial, eight, ten for community facility and it would keep the eight for residential, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and then on the bulk modifications, I've got the fifth floor recess around three sides. I've got the sixty feet, usually eighty feet between the buildings. The one thing that I just wanted you to clarify for me is the minimum base height question within the special permit. Can you just explain that one more time, because I think I may have missed it?
Of course. So the proposed development and within the text amendment in Queens Plaza sub-district, because everything gets a little special when you're talking about special districts, the minimum base height is one hundred feet, and so the base height must be between a hundred and a hundred fifty feet. But with this recess, the applicant is proposing to locate it on top of the fourth floor or at the fifth story of the proposed development, and that happens to fall below one hundred feet. Therefore, they need a modification just to allow the separation of the existing loft building and this new commercial tower.
Okay, got it. All right, so it ordinarily needs to be between one hundred and one fifty. This is on top of the fourth floor of the existing building, so that is below a hundred feet, and that's the need for the special permit action here.
Exactly.
Okay. All right, great. Excellent. Commissioner Bozard.
Has buildings been, the four-story, four-floor building, has that been vacant for a while, or what's the current?
Yes, it's been vacant since about around two thousand, when Eagle Electric left the building. And right now, with the current FAR only being eight, there's a limited amount of floor area. The residential tower is already taking up well over seven FAR. And so there's not enough FAR to allow for the use of the four-story building.
Got it. Okay, and they're building on top of it?
Yes. That's all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ramperchad.
Just with a comment, I know Wednesday they're coming. Just want the applicant team to be prepared to respond to the borough president's recommendations.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, Commissioner Benjamin, then Commissioner Sorio.
Can I just ask what the height is of the R and seven trains right as it passes by the site? What's the elevation versus the fifth floor open space?
I don't know off the top of my head, but I can pass this on to the applicant team.
Okay, that was, I'm just wondering how useful the open space will be if it's directly looking into or directly affected by the elevated train.
It's a, it's a very good valid question. It's a noisy train.
And it's two trains.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I would appreciate if when they come in, you can encourage them to explain how are they anticipating or how will they be preventing secondary, well, direct and secondary displacement to industrial businesses in the immediate surrounding area? Like, what is, what is expected and how are they planning to mitigate that?
Okay, I can pass that on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, thank you, Teal. With that, we appreciate your presentation today, and we will see this application at our public hearing on Wednesday. Thank you very much. Okay, Ryan.
The tenth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens, Community District Twelve. And our presenter is Kathy Ko, who will be joining us on Zoom.
Hi, good afternoon, Commissioners. We can move on to the next slide. This is a private application, sorry, in the Far Rockaway neighborhood of Queens, Community District Fourteen, on the property located at twenty-five forty-six Far Rockaway Boulevard. And the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change from an R four-one district to an R six B zoning district to facilitate the development of a new five-story residential building and a zoning text amendment to map mandatory inclusionary housing area. And as a reminder, this application was certified on November seventh, two thousand twenty-two. Next slide, please. The project area is outlined here in red, and it's located approximately a half-mile west of the downtown Far Rockaway rezoning area, which was approved in two thousand seventeen. And while not in the transit zone, the project area has good access to public transit with the Beach Twenty-Fifth Street Station that services the A Line located two blocks east, and there's also multiple bus lines serving the area. Next slide, please. The project area was mapped within R three-two and R four district in nineteen sixty-one and was rezoned to its current R four-one district as part of the two thousand eight Rockaway neighborhoods rezoning. And the surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential and community facility uses. The areas immediately surrounding the project area and R four-one and R four-eight districts is mostly comprised of one- and two-family detached and semi-detached residential buildings, as well as multifamily buildings ranging from three to six stories. Community facility uses, which are shaded here in blue, include the Challenge Preparatory Charter School, which is located within the project area. The block north of that in the R three-two district is a large educational campus with numerous middle and high schools. And Bayes Water Park is located one block west of the project area. And I'll note that the northern portion of the project area, which includes the charter school, is partially located in the one percent and point two percent annual floodplain, but the development site is not. Next slide, please. And this tax map shows the southern portion of the project area, just outlined with the dotted block line, includes block one five seven eight five, lots fifty-five, four, and parts of lots fifty-four and seven. Lots fifty-five and four comprise the development site, which are owned by the applicant. Next slide, please. And this slide shows the northern portion of the project area, which includes block one five seven three seven, lots one and ten, which is developed with the charter school I just mentioned. Next slide, please. And here we have a closer view of the project area in context with its immediate surroundings, with frontages on Hartman Lane to the west, Far Rockaway Boulevard to the south, and Beach Channel Drive to the north. The development site is outlined here in red, and it's comprised of a vacant three-story residence and a vacant lot. The project area also includes parts of the lots adjacent to the development site, which are developed with two two-story residential buildings, one of which is non-compliant and overbuilt. And also in the project area is the two-story charter school, which is just north of the development site, which is also non-compliant. And as for build context, as you can see, the residences surrounding the project area are mostly two-to-three-story residences, but there are also six-story multifamily buildings located a half-block west of the project area. And I'll note that, I'll note the proximity to an application that the commission recently certified on January thirtieth. Ocean Crest rezoning is located just a block west of the project area. Here we have a view of the portion of the development site that includes the vacant lot, including, oh, sorry, this is facing southeast from Hartman Lane at Beach Channel Drive. And also in view are the two-family homes that are adjacent to the development site. Next slide, please. And here we have a view from Far Rockaway Boulevard facing north at the southern portion of the development site that contains the vacant three-story residence. Next slide. The applicant proposes a five-story residential building at a height of fifty feet. It would total approximately thirty-two thousand five hundred square feet at a total FAR of two point one six. And there would be forty new dwelling units, of which ten would be permanently income-restricted. And twenty parking spaces would be located in the cellar to be accessed by a curb cut on Far Rockaway Boulevard. Next slide, please. And here, this site plan shows the proposed development with access to residential entrances along the building's primary frontage on Hartman Lane, which are indicated here by yellow arrows. And the gray arrow on Far Rockaway Boulevard indicates the nine-foot curb cut, which would provide access to cellar parking. Next slide, please. And to facilitate this development, the applicant proposes a zoning map amendment to change from an R four-one district to an R six B district, indicated by the dotted black line on the image to the right. And the change would also bring the existing non-compliant buildings within the project area into compliance. Next slide, please. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to map MIH options one and two across the project area. The applicant proposes to use option one for the proposed development, yielding in twenty-five percent of residential floor area as ten income-restricted units. Next slide. On January tenth, Queens Community Board Fourteen held a public hearing on this application and issued a disapproval with zero members in favor, twenty opposed, and one abstaining. And in their recommendation, the board cited the following issues, one that the, of the inclusion of the adjacent charter school within the project area boundary, as well as the proposed R six B district, as they find R five D more suitable due to concerns about overdevelopment in the area. Next slide, please. And the Queensborough President held a public hearing on February second, and their recommendation actually came in sometime between I submitted this presentation and today. So the Queensborough President recommended approval with the following conditions, that there should be a twenty-five percent goal to include MWBE firms, hiring local residents, and working with locally-based organizations and community groups. And that there should be quarterly reporting of these hiring initiatives, the Queensborough President and the council member. That the applicant should also consider setting aside more affordable or income-restricted units under MIH option one. And the applicant should install solar panels on the proposed development's roof, as well as adding other sustainable elements to the front, rear, and side yards. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Kathy. Just to make sure that I understood, the community board, among the reasons why they disapproved, was they wanted to see lower density here, R five?
R five D, right.
R five D. And with R five D, would you lose the MIH?
Right, that's, that's one of the main differences other than height. The FAR as well, the residential FAR would be two point O, but would not trigger MIH, so there would be no affordable housing mandated on the site. The community facility FAR would stay the same at two point O. The height would be reduced ten feet, and there would be a higher parking requirement.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Ramperchad, Commissioner Bozard.
Just a quick question, actually, Ryan, I know I brought this up last time. The car elevators, I know I had asked whether or not they were permitted obstruction in the required rear yard.
Right.
Is that considered like a garage? I mean, I was just wondering what the ASC's take on this was.
Yeah, so car elevators weren't widely used when permitted obstructions were being defined in nineteen sixty-one. As, you know, we've kind of discussed this since certification, but we, this is, it is being kind of interpreted here as car garages. But ultimately, DOB would make that determination once permits are filed. And I've raised this with the applicant, and if they have some experience, past experiences share around seeing this interpretation actualized, they can speak to that on Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Bozard.
Yes, thank you for the presentation. You may have mentioned this, and I missed it, and I didn't see it in the briefing material, but does the charter school itself own that property, or are they leasing it from someone else?
Um, I'm not actually sure if the charter school is, are the owners of the actual property. I, we can have the applicant.
And that's the site that's part of the proposed development area or the proposed project area?
Right.
That the community board is concerned about.
Yeah, they're within the proposed project area, but not in the development site.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be good to get a sense of if, who owns, or not, we don't, I don't need to know who specifically, but if the charter school owns it or someone else.
Sure, and if it helps. Oh, I just wanted to add that the applicant has said that in their engagement with the charter school, that they were, you know, okay with the rezoning as long as the proposed district remained residential.
Okay. Yeah, but I'm trying to understand if there's a risk to them of getting kicked off the site or, or not, if it's rezoned. The other question I had, I saw it somewhere in the racial equity report, that the applicant mentioned that the project helps create more independent and integrated living options for people with disabilities. But then I didn't, I, what was, did I miss something in the housing proposal where there's housing specifically for people with disabilities?
Um, I'm not entirely sure, but I can definitely have the applicant elaborate on that on Wednesday.
That would be helpful.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, thank you, Kathy. We will pick this one up on Wednesday. Thank you very much. Ryan.
So the eleventh item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a non-U-LIP modification to a previously approved special permit in Manhattan, Community District Five, and our presenter is Azkam Mahadine.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Hello, how are you?
Hi, doing good. All right, this is a private application by Parker Fifty-Seven LLC for a non-U-LIP modification to a previously approved special permit, coming back to the commission's post-referral. This application was previously presented and referred on November twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Next slide, please. The proposed action will enable design changes to a publicly accessible through-block arcade, or TBA for short, within what is now known as the Thompson Central Park Hotel on West Fifty-Sixth Street in the Midtown neighborhood of Manhattan, Community District Five. Next slide. The image on the right shows the surrounding context, looking north at the subject building outlined in yellow. The building, commonly known as Parker Hotel, is a forty-story mixed-use building located mid-block with frontage on both West Fifty-Sixth Street and West Fifty-seventh Street between Sixth and Seventh Avenues. The surrounding area supports a high-density neighborhood typical of Midtown Manhattan. The building height in the area ranges from eighteen to forty-nine stories on Sixth Avenue and twelve to twenty-seven stories on Seventh Avenue. Central Park is located two blocks north of the site. The predominant land use within the surrounding area is commercial and some residential with ground-for-retail. The avenues consist of a combination of commercial uses, hotels, museums, theaters, and churches. There are two subway stations on the same block of the development site, the Fifty-Seventh Street Seventh Avenue Station, providing access to the N, Q, R, and W lines, and the Fifty-Seventh Street Station, providing access to the F line. Next slide. There are several privately-owned public spaces within the surrounding area. Of note is the six-block chain of publicly accessible through-block connections running from West Fifty-first Street to West Fifty-seventh Street between Seventh and Sixth Avenues. The internal through-block connections are highlighted here in purple. The through-block arcade on the development site, highlighted here in yellow, is part of the six-block connection, providing an alternate connection between Fifty-seventh Street and Fifty-sixth Street. The proposed project would introduce improvements to this TBA. Next slide. The project site outlined here in the yellow dashed line comprises of Lot Nineteen and is commonly known as Parker Hotel, but has recently changed its name to Thompson Central Park Hotel. It is an irregular-shaped lot with two hundred feet of frontage on West Fifty-seventh Street and twenty feet of frontage on West Fifty-seventh Street. The primary use of the forty-story building is transient hotel up to the thirty-second floor, apartment hotel on floors thirty-three to forty, retailer ground and below-ground levels, and a below-grade parking garage. The site supports a six thousand eight hundred twenty square foot through-block arcade, outlined here in red, providing public pedestrian access through the ground floor of the building between Fifty-sixth and Fifty-seventh Streets. The proposed design changes in this application are limited to this TBA. The site also supports an approximately two thousand seven hundred square foot plaza, highlighted here in purple, located along the entire two-hundred-foot frontage on West Fifty-sixth Street. The azovar plaza is essentially unimproved, except for one planter and a driveway to the below-grade parking area. Except for this application, the applicant is also pursuing chair certifications for design changes to the plaza and an open-air cafe. Next slide. On May twenty-eighth, nineteen seventy-nine, the City Planning Commission approved a special permit to construct a forty-story-plus penthouse mixed-use building on development site. The original special permit approval included a through-block arcade pursuant to DR Section seventy-four eighty-two, which remains on the site. There was a subsequent non-U-LIP modification to the arcade in nineteen eighty-eight, which increased the quiet seating and tables in the space, among other changes. The criteria to qualify for a through-block arcade bonus was that the resulting space provides a potential improvement for pedestrian circulation and appropriate secondary commercial furniture along the through-block arcades, such as small shops and restaurants. The site also has a history of non-compliances for the TBA, including the operation of an unauthorized bar and failure to provide the required planting, seating, and signage. However, the hotel has changed ownership since the previous violations were issued, and the new owner has been working with the department to resolve these issues. When the department began working with the applicant to make design changes to the TBA, we used the criteria of the original special permit to ensure the proposed changes would improve pedestrian circulation and further activate the space in a way a secondary commercial frontage would. Since the TBA is part of the approved drawings and was considered by the commission in their grant of bulk modifications as part of the original special permit, any modifications to the drawing require commission approval, which is why I'm presenting this application to you today. Next slide. The applicant is proposing design changes to the through-block arcade within the hotel building that links Fifty-sixth and Fifty-seventh Streets to be facilitated by the proposed non-U-LIP modification. The department has gone through an extensive and iterative design process with the applicant and believes the proposed changes will result in an improved through-block arcade that will result in a high-quality public space. I will briefly go through these design changes by first focusing on the narrow portion of the arcade running Fifty-sixth Street, and then on the central arcade space. Throughout this presentation, you will see images of the through-block arcade reflecting the design changes proposed in this application. The space was renovated when the hotel was temporarily closed during the pandemic, as it was undergoing other renovations at that time. Instead of keeping the previous non-compliant conditions, the owners elected Instead of keeping the previous non-compliant conditions, the owners elected to make these updates to the public space with the understanding that they would have to comply with the plans as approved by the commission. Next slide. The design changes to the narrow portion of the through-block arcade include the legalization of the nave bar, additional seating and tables, and removal of decorative columns to create a more open space for improved pedestrian circulation. To prevent privatization of the public space, all ball-related activities are limited to the area highlighted in purple. No services required for the public use of the space around the bar and the provided seating and tables. To that effect, a no service required sign is proposed to be installed on the wall across from the bar. Next slide. These images show the previous condition on the left and the improved condition on the right. The expansion of the seating and tables and high-quality furnishings will result in an improved public space. The removal of the decorative columns will also improve pedestrian circulation and opens the space to make the through-block connection more visible to the public. Next slide. The site plan comparing the previously approved and proposed central arcade space showcases the two major design changes to this space. First is the removal of the partition door to the narrow portion of the arcade and the second is a significant increase in the seating and tables. The removal of the partition door will create a more open through-block connection and improve visual access to enable the public to more seamlessly enjoy both spaces and use the through-block connection. Next slide. These images show the previous condition on the left and the improved condition on the right. The proposed design changes include additional publicly accessible tables and seating within the central arcade space where previously only 16 benches were included. The proposal also includes an updated signage plan to improve the public that this is a privately owned public space, open 7:00 AM to midnight and no services required. The signage plan for 57th Street includes two-door decals and a marquee sign. And theory no service required signs proposed across from the bar. Next slide. The signage plan for the central arcade space facing 56th Street includes two-door decals indicating that this is a public space, open 7:00 AM to midnight and no services required. Next slide. At the pre-referral review session, the commission raised concerns that once inside, it might not be as clear that the space and the provided seating is for public use. In response to this concern, the applicant has added an additional public open space sign within the central arcade space as seen on this image to indicate that this is a public space and no services required. Next slide. In addition to the signage added by the applicant, the department also recommends that additional sign be added to the wall along the east side of the central arcade space. This additional signage will indicate to the public that the seating on the eastern portion of the arcade is also open to the public. The department believes the addition of these two signs in the central arcade space will go a long, long way in ensuring the space remains publicly accessible. Next slide. On January 12, 2023, Community Board Five voted with 34 votes in favor, zero opposed and one abstaining to approve the application. The community board was very supportive of the proposed design changes and commended the applicant for correcting previous non-compliances. Next slide. In summary, the applicant is seeking a non-ulear modification to facilitate design changes to the through-block arcade. The proposed design changes include the legalization of the nave bar, additional seating and tables, removal of decorative columns, removal of separating the two portions of the arcade, and upgrade to the signage plan to create a high-quality public space and improve pedestrian circulation through the block. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Let me see, um, what we've got by way of questions and I will note that at the, the end of this conversation, uh, we will seek consent by a voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. Um, so if there are any questions for Aska, we can pose them now. Okay, great. Thank you. With that, I will seek consent by voice vote uh to send that approval letter that I mentioned a moment ago to the Department of Buildings. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay.
Nay.
Noted. Commissioner Benjamin. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Aska, for all of your work on this. Um, Ryan, let's go on.
Uh, the 12th item on our agenda is a post-referral review of a CPC certification in Manhattan Community District 11. Our presenter is Jose Trusius.
Welcome, Jose.
Today I bring you 180 East 125th Street. Um, this is a private application for a whether an easement volume is required and to certify the location and size of the easement volume. Uh, the joint certification is a per, uh, prerequisite of the applicant obtaining a building permit and the application relates to a site in East Harlem in the neighborhood of Manhattan, Community Board 11. If the name sounds familiar, um, it is because we certified easement back in 2021. However, the need for an updating easement volume relates to requiring a much larger easement than previously anticipating uh for subway station and ancillary facilities at this location. Uh, at that time, when we were certifying this easement volume in 2021, the plans for the M T A were in final yet and given the much in the larger anticipation of the project, we need a bigger easement now. So the applicant and the M T A have worked around on terms of the size, the volume, the location of the easement, and I presented this project again. Just to mention that this application is currently to, you know, and solely modify the transit easement volume and to support the functioning of the transit facilities at this location. All right. The proposed development is located, uh, 180 East 125th Street in the East Harlem neighborhood, Borough of Manhattan, um, in Community District 11 in a C four for the district and contained within three special districts, uh, that modify the underlying, uh, zoning district regulations. The special transit land use district, the special 125th district and the special East Harlem corridor. The C four for the, um, zoning district permits a maximum floor area of four-point, um, F A R uh for commercial uses, six-point for community facility and six-point far for residential uses. Since the property is also located in the inclusionary housing, um, designated area, the, there is a, an available bonus of 1.8 F A R if available to increase the maximum residential area to 7.2. Black, uh, 1773 and lots 20 and 27 are bounded by each, East 125th Street to the north, East 124 to the south, Third Avenue to the east and Lexington Avenue to the west. The zoning lot has an area of about 78,000 square feet and the Lexington Avenue line, the four, five and six stops, has an express stop at East 125th and Lexington Avenue. The existing conditions, um, there is, there's, uh, some views from East 125th Street. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of residential and commercial uses. Most buildings in the surrounding area are, um, ranging from two to eight stories. We several taller buildings located east of Park Avenue. High and medium then, um, density zoning districts are mapped along 125th Street, Agustin, um, blocks, uh, from Morningside Avenue and Third Avenue. Uh, C four for the, six four four D districts, um, are a medium, uh, density contextual district which anchors the eastern and western portions of 125th Street. While the central portion is on, um, six six four, C four seven and a six six three districts, which are, you know, regard for, uh, a little more density than the C four four D. Um, the, sorry. Third Avenue, uh, the blocks, uh, to the west and south of the zoning lot area are older commercial residential and community facility buildings and some vacant lateran. And Lexington Avenue and East 124th Street, um, the block north of the zoning lot across East 125th. You know, uh, you can see the Golden, uh, Cotton Plaza is a, an 11-story mixed-use, uh, residential development constructed back in 2001. And it is so that block is the side of East Harlem, uh, one East Harlem, a significant mixed-use development of the former M T A's but, um, depot site, which is under construction and you can see in the back on the first image. A little bit of background, as I mentioned, this application was certified in 2021. Uh, at the, at the time, the application was duly referred by the department to the Community Board 11, we issue a letter of no, uh, no objection. The easement certified in 2021. And this year in January, the M T A and Excel, uh, reached an agreement to update the certified transit easement. And on February of this month, uh, the transit application was filed. Uh, we got a letter from the M T A, um, you know, requiring approving the easement volume that was provided by the applicant. And Community Board 11 of Manhattan issue a vote of no objection by 25 uh in support and three abstaining and no against in the executive committee meeting. And between February and March, the M T A and Excel, uh, are going to modify the M T A agreement and record, uh, proof of recognition needs to be sent to us in order to issue that, um, D O B letter sign off for the project to move forward. I just wanted to mention also that, uh, although the certification was a prerequisite to getting the building permits, the applicant, since they filed in 2021, already got that approval and this is essentially to modify the easement rather than to allow the development that is actually, um, happening already. All right. The proposed zoning, uh, the proposed development, and here I just want to make a clarification and just wanted to provide a little bit of, uh, background here because the easement will be located solely on Lot 20 and that's what you see in the pink, um, image. And on the, that's, yeah, the, uh, the right side, sorry, different screens. And there is a development that is also going to take place on Lot 27. That development is not subject to the, uh, the action today, but it's coming back to the commission because it's traveling with two other separate applications for a fresh certification and a fresh authorization that were, um, certified back in January 15. So this is currently in public review and you'll hear a little more about that project. But just to give you, um, a little bit of essentially an overview, you know, the maximums, the maximum that you can, you know, build in the zoning lot gets to a 7.45 F A R with incentives of, you know, inclusionary housing and the fresh store that would allow the development to go to 160 feet. As I mentioned, the easement is on Lot 20 and Lot 27 has, will have this mixed-use development of up to 15 stories and 160 feet high. Uh, it is, it's going to include residential units, about 300, um, 387,000 total residential use. 30% of this will be affordable housing units. Uh, the 24,000, um, commercial use in the bottom will be between retail and 6,000, about 6,000 or so are going to be for the fresh food store that's being certified. This is a system, uh, the 2020, uh, 2021 existing easement volume. So the, the lot in here is not partitioned, but includes lots 20 and 27 and together occupy the, the entire frontage along East 125th Street between Lexington Avenue and Third Avenue. And Lot 20 has an area of approximately 68,000 square feet and occupies the entire frontage along Lexington Avenue and approximately 160 frontage on East 124. Uh, Lot 27, which is the, where the building will be located, has an approximately 10,000 square feet and is located in the mid-block between, uh, with approximately 141 frontage on Third Avenue between East 124 and East 125th and 100 feet frontage on East 124 and 240 feet on East 125th Street. The 2021 easement volume was set to be located at the southeast corner of Lexington Avenue on East 125th Street and to occupy kind of like a perfect square of 63 by 63, um, in frontage on East 125th and Lexington Avenue with an area roughly of 4,000 square feet. And the vertical dimensions of this easement volume were to be on 18 feet above grade and approximately 120 feet below grade. The proposed easement volume, um, the entire frontage of, uh, uh, Lexington Avenue between East 125th and East 1 25th Street and 320 feet frontage of East 124th Street and Lexington Avenue and Third Avenue will be occupied by the proposed volume. The proposed updated transit volume will be located against solely on tax Lot 20, which is being acquired by the M T A. They're in the process of acquiring a title. And will be only used for the Second Avenue Subway Station and ancillary facilities to be located at that lot. Uh, will also provide a connection between the Lexington Avenue line and the development. Uh, the updated, um, transit easement volume will occupy 141,000 square feet of which 116, 16,000 will be above grade and extend approximately 110 for along East 125th, 180, um, along East 124th Street and entire block, uh, block frontage on Lexington Avenue. Above grade, um, as you can see in this, uh, image, uh, it will occupy various portions of the outer envelope of approximately 179, uh, feet along East 124th and East 125th Streets and entire block, uh, you know, frontage on Lexington Avenue up to 160 feet of the maximum zoning envelope. I just, uh, you know, quickly wanted to provide a, a quick, um, overview of the proposed action, uh, you know, uh, is, the action is being signed by the applicant on, uh, zoning resolution 95041, which, you know, is there were, uh, per Ricky's, I'm having so much trouble without worry for, uh, for filing the application with the Department of Buildings. But since they already obtained the permits, this is only kind of a ministerial type of action to modify the easement volume. We made clear and wanted to clarify that the use of this transit volume, although, you know, is a lot larger than all the volumes that we had considering in the past, are solely to be used for transit-oriented type of development. So, um, subway related uses and public access to stations. So we are, um, we had conversations with the M T A and the applicant to ensure that this, you know, uh, almost 114,000 square feet of volume will be utilized for this. And in summary, the applicant is seeking the joint certification for the M T A and the City Planning Commission. Uh, the certification will endorse, uh, the location, dimensions and type of easement volume required by the development site. The M T A has provided their approval letter as part of the joint certification back in February 8th. And the, as I mentioned, the M T A is in the process of acquiring the fee title for Lot 20. And on January 24th, Manhattan Community Board issued their resolution with no objection with 25 members in favor, zero opposed and three abstaining. Um, I'm happy to take any questions. The image on the right is kind of like that big picture of, uh, you know, some, as I write, or recently approved developments have happened on 125th Street. Uh, as I mentioned, this is part of the subway, uh, Second Avenue subway plans extension for the future.
Great, thank you. Um, I'm going to go in a moment to Commissioner Benjamin. Let me just, um, I just really have one core question about this. And it relates to the actual legal dynamic here and what exactly we are voting on. Because it's a little confusing and, um, I know that it's a joint, it's, it's a joint CPC and M T A certification. Correct?
Correct.
And that is, uh, CPC and M T A together saying that one, an easement volume is required here and two, certifying the precise size, location and type. Is that correct?
Right.
And the determination that an easement volume is required here, presumably we are relying rather significantly on what the M T A has advised us, correct?
Right. In, in terms of how the easement will work, so we usually have a step one and step two, as you mentioned. So step one is when we refer the application out to the M T A and that's when the, the joint certification essentially happens. The M T A let us know that they will require an easement and they send a letter back to us and that the application gets certified and sent out to the community board to approve the actual volume of the easement. Recently, we have been combining step one and two to have, you know, since we already know that anything is going to be required, having the M T A actually approve the plans in advance. So we can send out the whole application together to, with the drawings and everything affecting community board. Um, you know, the easement, we don't have as much of, you know, I'll say involvement of how the easement is deter, the easement is determined, that is between the applicant and the owner. And, you know, they have an M T A agreement on things of what they can essentially, you know, happen on, in the space. Uh, we are, you know, when we're certifying this, we're ensuring that no floor area is, you know, misused in terms of like how an easement should be used in the future on this.
So who, so, uh, so precisely who is the applicant here?
Uh, 160, uh, 163 LLC, which is the owner of the lot.
Okay. So the owner of the lot is applying for the certification under, for this, as commission certification to show that one, it is known that a, that easement volume was required and two, that this is in fact
The easement.
The size, location and type of the easement required. Full stop.
Full stop, yeah.
And it is the, the prerogative of this commission to evaluate whether in And it is the prerogative of this commission to evaluate whether, in fact, the thing is that it says it is.
Yes.
Both required and on this.
Right.
And this size, location, and type, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, you know, there is an element of this being, as I understand it, a bit ministerial for us to confirm that the thing is what it purports to be.
Right.
But the big picture here is that the MTA has said, hello, we need an easement on this site for the future Second Avenue Subway, which will pass through a hundred and twenty-fifth Street, and we have worked out a specific volume with this property owner that we need to acquire from them.
Right, all right. That is the process.
Okay. Commissioner Benjamin.
I'm probably the side on this one. It's possible, I know that right now, the Second Avenue Subway goes to ninety-six.
Please, that's correct, yeah.
Do we have or can we obtain a routing for where it intends to go after that?
Yeah, I mean, I've seen plans from the MTA presented to the community boards in terms of where like the new extension will be, so I can facilitate that.
Okay, that would be great, because I wasn't sure how it got to Lexington Avenue.
Yeah, well, there is an existing, there's an existing station in there, so the easement will, you know, essentially improve the surrounding area and the connections with, sorry, I put the lot area map in here. So, yeah, on Lexington Avenue, it is an existing station in the easement.
Right, but it's a Lexington Avenue Line station.
Right.
So I was just wondering how the queue will get over to Lexington Avenue and where?
For easement, you know, I think for this, specifically for ancillary facilities, so I believe there's going to be some type of storage. We don't know really what the plans are for the whole, you know, one hundred and fourteen thousand square footage of volume easement, but for the description of what transit easement should be used for, it will be for ancillary facilities and.
Right, that's why I think it'd be good to just at least have a idea how the train is coming and where it's going after that, and what the timing would be. And part of that question is, if the Second Avenue Subway isn't fully built out, and this site is then not required, because the Second Avenue Subway is not built out to there, can the MTA just sell this, once they're the fee owner, can they just sell it?
I don't really know the answer to that, but I can try to find out, yeah.
And, and if they, if the MTA can give us some idea of the timing of their, their Second Avenue Subway extension.
Yeah.
And funding commitment, that would help me analyze whether this sounds reasonable.
Yeah, for sure. And when I say, you know, it's a Second Avenue expansion thing, I, you know, what I misinterpret saying that this, the line is going to, the queue is going to go there is part of a bigger, you know, master plan of the MTA. I just want to clarify that.
Thank you, Commissioner Benjamin, and you asked a good question about how exactly this could be used, what legal rights MTA would have if they didn't actually effectuate use of this space. And for today's purposes, we will be voting on whether a volume has been identified and what it is. So that is what I'm going to do now, unless there are other questions or comments. Commissioner Marine?
I'm still a little bit confused on the sixty-three-three. You showed a block, a square of sixty-three-three.
Yeah.
And then you showed a bigger easement, and then you show a volume that goes up like six or eight stories. Can you explain all that, please?
Yes, on two thousand twenty-one, the sixty-three, sixty-three easement was what the MTA anticipated they will need for the space in this tax lot, tax lot twenty. And, you know, given that the development for their plans on Second Avenue Expansion didn't, you know, weren't finalized at the time, and, you know, fast forward two years, they had like, you know, actually a more structured plan, they had dissipated using a one hundred and fourteen thousand square footage of actual easement volume. So this was the two thousand twenty-one approved one, you know, at that time, we also recommended that they go a little bit bigger, because the reason that we're here today is because we don't modify certifications, we had to process a whole new certification for a transit easement, and since, you know, it's much larger than we ever anticipated to be, this is the new.
And the height, the volume in terms of stories, height?
Mm-hmm.
Why so, what's, what's, what's the need for all this airspace, development space?
Right, so this is the maximum allowable bill out for the zoning lot. So it's going up to a hundred and sixty, with inclusionary housing and with the fresh bonus. So, you know, there is an instance that they might use less space than this, but given that we already went through this process and now being able to, you know, maximize the easement volume, they're going through the maximum possible envelope.
So this is the maximum envelope in height, in terms of height, what they may need?
Yes.
Which seems exorbitant for a train that's underground. And to answer your, it just, it just makes no sense, but okay. And to answer your question, Commissioner Benjamin, my understanding is that it's supposed to turn up one twenty-fifth and terminate, and it's supposed to end here at Lexington, which is why it's such a big volume. But the height is just beyond me, it befuddles me.
Well, thank you. I mean, on the subject of height, you know, listen, the MTA does sometimes do grand two-story entrances which allow for light and air to come into a, into a station. Yeah, that, that would be too big for that. I mean, they may also have other, they may have other needs for the space as well, and that may be part of it. Go ahead.
That's where your, your point about we're somewhat dependent on the MTA's analysis that this is what they need to get their work done.
Right, that's right. That's right, we are, yeah, we are relying on the MTA to claim what it believes it needs and to certify that, in fact, that is being provided by the developer. Correct. Other questions, comments? Okay, all right, so now I'm going to do as promised, I'm going to seek consent by a voice vote to send an approval letter to the Buildings Department. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay? Okay, great, I just have it on this one, and we are almost done. Ryan, thank you very much, Jose.
Yes, thanks, Jose. So for future votes on Wednesday, we will be voting on the Otis Elevator Building, two sixty-eleventh Avenue text amendment, the Flatbush Avenue bid expansion, the Melrose Parkside Historic District, forty-one nineteen Richmond Avenue, one fifty-two Hillcrest Street, Prowl Avenue, and Annandale Road, which has a block and lot, I'm not going to read for you guys. If there are any questions on any of these items as we get ready to vote.
Commissioner Soriano.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Ryan. I just had a quick suggestion for the Otis Elevator Building report. The report states that the applicant intends to incorporate sustainability measures, but we haven't seen evidence of that. And so I'm wondering if, if we can slightly change the language of the report.
Sure.
To say that we're voting on this, provided that the applicant implement what the applicant has promised to the Community Board, which includes lead certification or higher, all electric, and then to the Borough President in terms of additional trees and permability.
Certainly, we can, we can.
Let me take a look at that, at that language.
Yeah, we can strengthen that language. I don't think there's any.
Well, we should, yeah, we should take a look at it.
We should talk about it. We can definitely strengthen it, but I don't want to guarantee.
Thank you, great, thank you, Commissioner. Okay, other questions, comments before we close?
Just want to also on post-hearing follow-up, fifty-eight Nixon Court rezoning was withdrawn, so we're not having a post-hearing on that.
Okay, thank you. Ryan, thank you to you, thank you to the team at City Planning. It was a marathon day, and Commissioners, thank you for your energy and patience, and we will see you all on Wednesday, and with that, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.